Good evening, everyone. We do have a couple rows of seats to the left and in the front. If people want to grab those, that's fine, or where you are. So first and foremost, I would like to thank everybody for taking the time to come out tonight. Obviously, with the turnout, we're talking about something that's very near and dear to us as a community, and those are our schools. So thank you very much, I appreciate that. As superintendent of schools, my name is Matt Curtis. I've been the superintendent for, this is my eighth year, 14 or 15 years in the district. And this evening, we have a couple goals, and I'm really hopeful that we'll be able to accomplish those goals. So one of them is, we'd like people to gain a better understanding, a more thorough understanding, of the work of the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force, where the work has been over the last year and a half, and where we are right now. The second piece, and most important piece, obviously, is to get the input and the feedback of the community. Obviously, from the turnout, from when we sent out the flyer to promote this event, we've received multiple emails, multiple phone calls, many of them have been about what has been referred to as an option one, that people would like to know more about what a reconfiguration or a rewiring of our current structure would look like. So I do want to let you know, as part of Mr. Waznisky's presentation this evening, he will demonstrate and talk about some of those other options, and I think that will be helpful in understanding what our thinking was, and understanding where we may be going, and provide more opportunity for questions, which is important. The last piece of the puzzle, I really want folks to take away from this evening, is that no decisions have been made in this process. This is an open process. We chose this date pretty close to when we had the last Board of Education meeting, which was the time that these options were presented to the board for consideration, and we bring it into public forum. So we look forward to hearing your feedback, using your feedback to create next steps in the plan. But I hope we also come away with a greater understanding of what the challenge is that we're faced with. So the challenge we're faced with, as a school community and a community at large, is aging elementary school buildings. We'll learn about that a little bit more specifically tonight. Capacity issue within those buildings, and a projected pretty significant increase in the next five years that's not stabilized around where the enrollment's increasing in town. So we definitely have a challenge to wrestle with as a community, and I think that tonight, your feedback and input will be extremely important. So again, thank you for coming. The way we're going to structure the evening is we have a presentation that Tecton Architects and Jeff Waznisky, who is here with me this evening, he's worked with us since the onset of this process, will take us through. Again, hopefully that will fill in some of the gaps and lead to more questions, maybe answer some questions that people have, and then we will open it up absolutely for public comment and questions. Our Board of Education Chair Tara Willerup will talk about how we'll structure that when we get to the point and get through the presentation. So at this time, I'd welcome Jeff to the podium. Welcome, Jeff.
My name is Jeff Waznisky. I'm a principal at Tecton Architects, and thank you all for coming out this evening. As Matt had mentioned, we have about a 35-minute, 40-minute presentation, and we want to kind of take you through some of the history, some of the process of the particular project. So the agenda for tonight is a summary of the goals. Why are we doing this? Why were we asked to do this, Tecton? What does that include? Item two is give you the history, as I mentioned, and then I'm going to try to spend a large majority of our presentation on outlining the options and summarize kind of the options that were studied. There was numerous options that were studied since our last public forum, which was on June 6th, I believe, where we talked about existing conditions. I'm going to talk about the key objectives of the options and strategic planning options, and basically a plan for implementation. What we want to do is describe the need, so you understand where that fits with your current facilities. So I just want to repeat, and this is great, we have a full room here, it's about seeking input on the options. It's a work in progress. So for those that are seeking information, I just put this up, and it'll be at the end of the presentation as well. There's a website, it has some of the existing conditions information, and then if you have email questions, you can certainly send them there. So the folks that have been involved in the process to date, obviously, all of the principals and leadership at the Simsbury Public Schools, we've met quite a few times, we've made a few presentations to the Board of Education, and we've met quite a few times with the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force Committee, which is made up of representatives from the school department, parents, community, business manager, all their various different aspects, Public Works, engineering, and Board of Ed. So who we are, Tecton, we had a full team. Malone and McBroom produced the demographic projections. We're not going to spend a lot of time on that tonight. That's about population and what's happening in your community related to population. So I would encourage you to look at the original public forum presentation to understand that in more detail. And then the rest of the complement of engineers. So this is what we were asked to do. So the goals of this project are to analyze the existing conditions and assess the educational needs. So we've completed our assessment of the existing conditions. We have a book, you know, book on each of the schools, describing the facilities, the condition, and our recommendation for remediation of those. Employees, a sustainable approach to address the facility concerns that we identify. Understand the demographic and population projections and the impact it has on the existing facilities. Develop alternative configurations and options, and that's what we'll talk about tonight. Engage the community, because this is about this community. The plan, the strategic plan, is a plan for you folks. And really, the idea is to come up away with a long-range master plan that you can utilize basically for the long-range plan of your school. So I'm sorry if I noticed somebody was trying to... I'll try to stay focused on the mic here. All right. So project history and process. We started at the tail end of 2018. We spent a lot of the winter and early spring doing existing conditions. We had a public forum in June. Since then, over the summer, early fall, up until now, today, we've been working on options, trying to figure out what makes the most sense. It's a work in progress, and we're here to present some of our thinking and get feedback. So with that feedback, we'll start looking at revised options. But it's important to understand that this is kind of the best thinking to date, and there's options and variations that we certainly can study. So let me just finish here. The idea is, between fall and all the way through winter and spring, we come up, develop a consensus document and plan that we can then turn over to the community to use as a tool for implementation. So key points from the first public forum. New housing development was analyzed, as I had mentioned. There's a steady increase in the enrollment over the next five years, about 300-plus students. I have some more detailed specifics as to what schools. Fastest growth, Latimer, at 21%, Squadron 17, and Central. So this is just a graphic that Malone did as far as the birth hotspots, so you can kind of see where some of that growth is. This is tracking enrollment projections. Left side of this slide is your current enrollment today, and it's about 10 years out, 2028, 29. On the far right, I know you can't read the small digits, but it shows basically a steady increase in nearly every school in the community, in the elementary grade levels. So although the town... So some other key points from the first public forum. It was recognized that the town's done a great job maintaining the facilities and trying to implement consistent improvements, but there hasn't been a really comprehensive renovation to any of the elementary schools. They've been well-maintained, and they certainly got great value over their lifespan, and I'll have some statistics on the history of that. Most of the needs, because we did study the middle school and the high school as well, most of the needs have been identified in the elementary school level. So I'm not going to get into the detail, but this is a snippet of the existing conditions, how we arranged it. There's ratings, there's schedules, that document is basically in almost complete form. Their final reviews are taking place, so we can tidy up some loose ends, and that document will be available for the public to view, so they can understand the conditions, the current conditions of the school. A couple other things on the elementary that were key points were, many of the existing elementary schools have been added to multiple times, which leads to somewhat inefficient layouts. So, and you'll see kind of the impact that it has, not only on the building itself, but the actual educational space. And then, as you add to the buildings, the core facilities typically stay the same size, cafeteria, gyms, things like that. So you start to add more student population, you tend to start stressing those core facilities. So please keep that in mind, particularly in the elementary schools. I'm not going to get into this, but there's four elementary schools here. These are kind of vintage plans as to how the buildings were added to over time. Just look at the top-left one, which is Tooten Hills, and you can kind of see the various different adds to the building and what you kind of end up with when you get there. So to drill in a little bit more detail, this is Latimer Lane Plan, a floor plan. And what we did is, we wanted to analyze the actual efficiency of the building as it stands today. So the gray area is the footprint of the building. So we measure the efficiency factor by the total gross area and measured compared to all your corridors, toilets, storage rooms, all of the kind of non-programmable space, and you end up with a factor. And for Latimer Lane, you're about 40%, okay? So a typical building, you know, if it was new, or even some of the older buildings, the typical efficiency for an elementary school is anywhere from 25% to 30%. So what does that... Why does that matter? What does it mean? Well, if you compare the difference between those percentages and translate it to space, it means that you're, because if you add it on, and you have these long corridors and travel paths, you're losing out on about 4,800, 5,000 square foot of educational space. And this is not unique to just one school. It's pretty much throughout most of the elementary schools, with the exception of Squadron, because it's never been added to, onto. It's about 50 years old this year, actually. Moving along, key points, comprehensive renovation, we already addressed. They are using every space possible, and you see that through the existing conditions documentation, where, you know, the needs have changed over the time period that the buildings have been used. So you see a lot of need for a lot smaller breakout spaces, and so you go walk into, you know, what was a classroom, and it's subdivided with temporary kind of office partitions. So it's done a great job there. And then the statistic on the bottom is interesting one, that if you take the average original construction of the elementary schools, it's about 74.4 years old. So interesting numbers. This is just a chart of what you have today with all your schools, your building name, your build, current age, current enrollment, grade configuration, and then the square footage. Just, it's good information to start from. So what we heard at the first public forum is, it is time to look at this, you know, look at the plan comprehensively, look at all the schools. We also heard sustainability's a key ingredient in any kind of solution, so we want to make sure we pick that up. And then, we already mentioned, all schools are being used to their maximum potential. We also heard, let's make sure that we build in flexibility and don't oversize things. Let's open minds, no preconceived ideas, and we'll take you through some of our process there, and just make sure that you understand kind of some of the thinking behind the options that we have. And then be fiscally responsible, you know? So that speaks to this long-range plan. So we were asked to give you a plan for anywhere from 15 to 20 years. Okay, so now we're going to get into the history of options considered. I elaborated on this quite a bit since, I think, the Board of Ed meeting, so that you could kind of, it gives a bigger window into some of our thinking with the original options. So we've had numerous meetings with not only leadership, but with an admin council, with the Board of Ed we've presented, with the Facilities and Enrollment Task Force. So, long story short, we've worked since June till now to try to bring some of our best thinking as far as configuration options to the community, okay? So this is a diagram just showing that some of the workshops were interactive, where, you know, we're posting what benefits and challenges for each of the options. And then, I'm going to take you all the way back to where we first started, because I know people are interested. So, and I'm going to go kind of give you the Cliff Notes version, but this is the options where we started, like day one. This is our thinking, just trying to... Where you start with these options is you have to free your mind from what's out there today, and provide a series of options to see what's best for the community, and it's a process. It's a process where, you know, it's not going to be perfect this time. That's why we're having this meeting, we want to hear the feedback. It's kind of the rinse, wash, and repeat method until we get it right. So first, where we first started is, let's just renovate what the state calls renovate as new. Let's just take all of the facilities and go through comprehensively, renovate them. And that's what's called, from the state application standpoint, renovate as new. So we looked at that, including the population surge, so we kind of married those two together. We looked at, can we redistrict Terrafill and Squadron? Does it make sense to try to balance out the student population? Does it make sense to build larger elementary schools and see if we can get any, some kinds of efficiencies? Do we close a school? Is it... Which one do we close? So those are things that we studied to see, and I'll show you some graphics on why some work better than others. Can we reconfigure? We even looked at pre-K, you know, do we want to do pre-K, 3-5? That didn't have a lot of momentum behind it, but what came out of that is, you know, maybe we could relocate a grade to the middle school. Maybe that makes more sense from a curriculum standpoint. So not all of them are good. Not all of them worked. In fact, many of them didn't. We looked at reconfiguring for three elementaries and one lower academy, 5-6, that had a little... And then kind of look at dedicated space for pre-K. So it had a little momentum to it. So let me walk you through a little bit more of the detail for renovate as new, okay? So, and the setup is relatively consistent as far as the structure. So you have the buildings on the left, the grade configuration, the current enrollment, and then the future enrollment as it's currently laid out district-wise. And then the type of construction that we might want to contemplate. You see renno, add renno, and I'll get into that in a minute, when we compare capacities of schools. So the benefits, it's great, you know, maintains neighborhood schools. The challenge is, we need swing space. So it's fine, it can be resolved, you can put in temp modulators, you can find, you can release space, you can, you do all kinds of things, but it's a challenge to, you have a growing population, you're using every space, how do you renovate when everybody's there? So that became a negative for this, and it may not be fast enough to go through and cycle through all these schools and do it. So we identified it as a negative. I'm sure there's others and more in more detail. But the other option, so we looked at, was let's see if we can balance the top slide is, or top piece of the slide is current enrollment and future enrollment, and then the middle piece is redistrict to try to balance out. Can we split it and say, put 469 in one school and 469 in the other? What does it look like? Just very quickly test fit on Terrafill. Can we even fit it? So we just looked at, here's what 62,000 square foot looks like, and it's, there's not a lot of room there. Great site, it's just, it's tight when you try to add more to it. So that is a bit of a challenge. Squadron has, that's the property line, the yellow is the property line, so there's some room there on that site, so maybe that's, maybe that's your swing space that we could save for kind of the future. So some of the benefits are okay, it's great, similarly sized schools, but it does change neighborhoods and traffic patterns. A lot of you are here to make sure that that is a bigger negative, which is fine. We may not, and it may not address the enrollment fast enough. And there's more in the presentation, so I can explain the kind of the near-term need, and how you, how hopefully we can build a strategic plan to kind of take care of the near term, and give you flexibility towards the end of your plan. Other options, and I'm going to move a little bit quicker. So we reduced, you see larger elementary schools at 570, which is large, and then, and they're all equal. May reduce overall operating cost, great, but it's negative because it reduces neighborhoods. It may not address enrollment, and schools may become too large. So these are just, again, Cliff Notes, there was a lot more discussion to it, but, you know, these are the reasons why. Pre-K to 2, and then a 3 to 5, that's what it could look like. And I think it does provide more flexibility when you start looking at the numbers, but jeez, it disrupts everything in town, and that is a negative that we would have to consider. And then, lastly, is really looking at the 5-6. In fact, when we first started looking at it was, we were looking at it at Central School, just to consider it, to see what it looked like, and then have K to 4s in Tooten Squadron and Latimer. So that was kind of our first swing at it, you know, and some was met with not such great, you know? Not all my ideas are good ones, or are... So, you know, and my wife tells me that quite often. But so I just, so that's where we started, right? So again, you got to go through this process. So we did. We said, all right, next shot, next meeting, let's, what works, what doesn't work? One is, one could work, we just got to figure out where to put the kids. For, the good part of 4 is sixth grade, there's something to that sixth grade at Henry James, so let's explore that more. And then the 5-6 seemed like, you know, it made sense, because it, what it does is, if you build a 5-6 somewhere, and we have some ideas, but somewhere, it gives you some freedom in the elementary schools K to 4, right? So that's kind of what we were looking at, right? So then we continued to explore, okay, can we add to Terrafill? What would that look like? These are all test fits, right? These are just concepts. Do we tear down a portion? Do we flip it? Do we build it more efficient? Obviously, that isn't really that logical, because the original building is, you know, sentimental and historic, so we want to be sensitive to that. So that one didn't really go well. Here's what a new building would look like at Squadron if we used the other side of the site, and then when we took the existing building down. The challenge with Squadron is, wow, is it a difficult building to try to add to. So that's why you don't see a lot of addition renovation on that particular building, because it's the core for classrooms, the core for the gym, cafeteria areas. So it just, it was very difficult. So here's what a different building could look like. And so you start to see a pattern here, where, you know, we were continuing to explore, this is Central. Do we add to Central? Do we change Central? Great building, probably the best condition of all of them, but the traffic patterns are tough, real tough, and do we look at some simple fixes there, and then a small addition to accommodate? And then we looked at Tooten Hills, is there room to build new? So what was interesting is, there's three schools that really have the ability to kind of build, if you wanted to build new, to build new, and then renovate, and then either use the existing building as swing space after, or you tear it down and kind of renovate the site after that. So you can, and that's what these depict. So we're starting to pick up some other ideas, and then we also looked at, you know, okay, if, where, where the district lines could be for these kinds of things. So we did look at geography, albeit at a very high level. And then, as I mentioned before, and it's, this is the room we're sitting in and standing in this evening, you got to look at the core spaces if you're going to do addition renovation or renovate as new, right? You have to, because if you're going to add students, things like, simple things like, you can't go to four lunches for, or five lunches for kids during the day. So you got to size the core spaces. So this was just a snapshot of, okay, if we do 6 to 8 at this school, right? If we add a sixth grade wing, it, there's a, these are all based on state formulas, okay? These aren't my formulas or somebody else's. This is state formulas, based on, this is a recommendation. If you do all the math, and you added sixth grade to this building, you're short by about 2,000 square feet, so we'd have to add on somewhere in order to fit three waves of lunch for grade levels 6 through 8. So we studied that piece, too. So there's a lot of different components. The other component is costs. So I, there, we did cost options, and I want to take you through the methodology. That methodology applies to all of them. So what's important is, you're comparing consistent options to consistent options, because we don't want to kind of, we don't want to start tweaking things, just to, it's going to change the data. I'm a data person, we need to look at it equally, right? So costs, they're based on historical averages, right? So we have a database, we collect it from our partners or consultants, we have it, I'll show you. Costs escalated to midpoint of 2022, so potentially, the first project, wait, whenever that project occurs, you want to escalate to the midpoint of that. So right now, for the, all the numbers are all escalated to that point. May not be right, maybe five years out, two years out, don't know, we can change that. There is going to be some adjustments once we find consensus on the options. It doesn't include costs for like any kind of special site logistics or multi-vehicle ride. But bottom piece is the biggest takeaway, so you understand, right? So renovate as new, you get 30, this is based on, I think, 2018 reimbursement rates. This is the state, state's going to give you 34% back on your dollar if you renovate as new, and if you build new, it's 10% less. So that works into all the formulas for all the options, so that we can understand it. Albeit, there are some, as the state evolves, there, there's, the gap between that 10% is starting to become a little bit closer, and we can go into that. So these are the numbers, right? So high-level order-magnitude costs, site improvements, parking, talk about demolition, because if you renovate, you might demo and add new, all-new construction. So these are all kind of, not the Taj Mahal, not, you know, you're going to have to fix it in 10 years, they're right, they're good quality buildings. That's the numbers. Soft costs, I'll get you in detail, and then the two reimbursement rates that I told you. Ineligibles is a state piece, but it's something that they say that they're not going to reimburse, so it's a safety net. We want to be conservative with this. All right. So soft costs, I'm going to try to go quicker. Soft costs, think of this building, flip it upside down, shake it out, everything that comes out of it, architects, engineers, furniture, everything, computers, all that's soft, that's all costs that are, when we talk about projects, we're talking about total project costs, which are construction costs and all the soft costs, okay? So that's the numbers that you'll see. And then each school was set up exactly the same way. This is an example of a renovate as new, K to 6. So this was pulled from that first option, right? So the first piece is, you take the highest enrollment from that, from Malone and McBroom's eight-year projection, right, for that school, you take the highest one, by grade level. See it up there, kindergarten at 65, so you see all those numbers. You multiply it by a state standard, and do the math, maximum allowable square footage. The state says, here's, that's what you can build, 64,000 square feet. Existing building is 45. So that tells you you have a capacity problem, right? So you need to build a 17,000-square-foot addition if you were going to just renovate as new Latimer for the projected enrollment, okay? So you multiply it by maximum, I forgot my steps here. Compare the maximum allowable to existing, I got a little too fancy. For, project costs, we just went over that. So you take all those, that math, and you multiply it by the unit costs, then you do the state reimbursement, less the state reimbursement in eligibles, and there's two numbers, right? So there's the project cost, the 26 million, that's like, that's all the checks that go out the door, and then you're going to get money back from the state, and that's what it costs Simsbury, 25 million for that particular project, that particular option. So all the options are set up the same way. Difference in new, I just kind of grayed out all the other stuff. The difference is, square footage, well, the population changes a little bit, but you got to demo the building, right? So if you're going to build new, you got to, maybe you don't, but for this particular option, you demo it, and you build new, and then the 10% reimbursement. So look at it, 31, renovate as new, 25, essentially the same building, new, demoing existing is about 31. So it gives you kind of a high-level idea of where the cost would be. So after all this, we continue to revise and refine, and what kind of hit us in the face was, you know, this near-term, a lot of communities are seeing, incidentally, some communities are seeing a population increase, which is interesting, around you, particular communities around you as well. And some of their programs, and it's not a criticism, some of their programs didn't account for, you know, if you build, if you go through a comprehensive program, you're probably going to attract more, right? So the thought process behind the next, this next refinement was to provide some flexibility in step one of this phase, with allowing, flexibility in the elementary schools, with allowing, you know, this plan, again, is 20 years, remember, allowing some flexibility in the back end of the plan, so that if the community changes one way or another, you can adapt that plan. So that's pretty key to this thinking. So the two items that we repeated, condition and capacity, those are the two that you got to take away from this evening, right? Condition, I encourage you to, if you have trouble sleeping, you can read our report, but it, there's kind of a cheat sheet, there's a cover page of... but it, there's, there's kind of a cheat sheet, there's a cover page of like the condition where it says, you know, poor, not good, you know, so you can generally understand the condition of each building in a, in a five-minute kind of tour. These are some of the photos, I know you know the buildings better than I do. So I showed demographics early on, right? And we, every October, they, I'm not sure I'm doing it for time. Every October, they report, the school reports to the state and then typically you update your enrollment projections. So when we first started, we were using basically 18s. This is 19s update. So it is happening, okay? So, so the difference, the difference between 18 and 19 and the projections based on real data that was just this October, it increased by 82 students in the K to six. So I just, it just, I wanted to underline the two problems, right? So we understand. And we can talk about all options and all kinds of things after this, but, so the capacity analysis I already really went through, but I guess the key takeaway, this is Latimer, the key takeaway, I updated it for, for the revised enrollment numbers, is that all the capacities are based on a, on a math of state standards. So if you have this size school, you get this many square feet per student equals that. So that's how we kind of measured at this high level. So just today, if you were to look at Latimer, right, and did all the math and took the delta between what you need, what the, what the state formula says you need and what you have, you got a 26,000, 26,500 bust in the square footage, or you would have to add, that's a 57% difference in, in the increase in the building. So I think I've hit that pretty well. Here's a summary of kind of that analysis by building. A large majority of them are in the red, which means they're overcapacity or will be when, when the, when the population surge hits. The last piece, so Tooton, you wonder, well, geez, why, you know, why is that one in the green? Well, remember when you added that efficiency plan that I, I talked to, you, you had a lot of square footage because you had a lot of corridors. It's not necessarily, this is a metric to use, it's not necessarily translatable to the educational space. So, so that's why we measured a couple of those things to get there. So don't expect me to read all this, I just want to highlight what we did, and I know I maybe have too many spreadsheets, but I like them. 19, on the left side is, is 19 and then it's the projected increase per year. And I did a delta so I could see by school how many students would, are projected to, to arrive each school year. And I just want to summarize it by, in three years, if you follow these projections, there's going to be about 215 more students. And that translates to somewhere around 10 to 11 classrooms. In four years, you're at 282, so 13 to 14. So I spoke to this earlier, we need to future-proof the plan. And we're all ears tonight as far as the, the front end and the back end of this plan to try to figure out what's right for the community. It's just, I, we wanted to make sure we communicated the need. We want to free up space in the elementary schools. There's going to probably be some redistricting regardless of the options. We want to create space for improved curriculum. It, you know, people will say, well, we fit, you know, 1,000 kids, you know, in this school, you know, 15 years ago. Education is ever-evolving, just like I guess our architectural designs are, but, so you got to keep that in mind, right? We teach differently today and, and we're using metrics that are fair and equal for all of the, all of the facilities, so, so keep that in mind. And then strategically address the immediates to allow. So this was our best thinking and maybe it does need to change, well, here. Step one, option, we call it option one, there's, I guess, as you date them, there's many of these, it's, but I want to keep it, try to keep it simple. So step one in option one was maybe, maybe you look at a new five, six to, to pull five and six out of the elementaries and give you some freedom, buy you some time. You'd reconfigure the elementaries to K to four and pop it, possibly repurpose Tariffel as a pre-K. And I know many of you are here for that, maybe that doesn't happen, maybe we look at a variety of options there. That's what, that's what we're here for. Step two is, do we build three elementary schools or do we build four? The charts on the left and right, and I think, oh, there it is. Chart on the left is three elementaries plus pre-K, chart on the right is four plus pre-K. You see the, so we tried to keep it consistent. Henry James starts, grade configuration, current enrollment, future enrollment, and then the type of construction. So that's consistent for both. So you can kind of see I graded out Tooton on the three elementary and then it's, it's come back online and, and the right side options. So again, studying options and that impact. Option two was a slight deviation on that where, same theme where we're trying to find space to put, put this surge rather than, you know, you certainly can do it by building around the elementary schools, it's just going to take longer. And the concern is that you might run out of time, but we can analyze that further. Option two is putting sixth grade addition on Henry James and starting, building a new K to five. Right now we chose Latimer, could change, but reconfigure the K to fives and possibly repurpose Tariffel as pre-K and Board of Education space. And there's numbers and statistics on all of that, all those costs as well. So we knew the building was, this kind of was a nod, both were, that the building was important to the community, so we tried to come up with at least for first blush, options that would, would reuse it, repurpose it, save it as an educational facility. If that's not the direction, we'll look at more. Here's the costs for step one, okay? So the costs are same math, I just tried to keep it a little bit simpler. As far as the summary, left side is option one, the site and building, you know, so you're talking about a 56, $57 million project for step one. And it would cost Simsbury about 45. Option two, if you wanted to couple, you know, there could be a question, well, why don't you just build the sixth grade and, and we'll deal with the rest, you know, down the road? Well, our job was to give you kind of a, a plan looking at all of it. You certainly can do that, it's just that next project's going to come a little bit closer to when you think it's going to happen, if, if all the projections come true. So we coupled them, it's a little bit more money, but it's two, two projects and that's step one. These are not intended to illustrate a final design, it's what we call a test fit. That's what a five, six building out of about 196,000 square foot building would look like on this site in particular, actually. So it would be out that direction. And maybe there's some nice synergies between linking five, six to seven, eight from a curriculum, I'm not the expert, you can certainly ask your questions, but maybe a nice possibility. We kind of reoriented fields the way they should be for lacrosse and tennis and just took an opportunity. The, the other thing that you'll see on both options is there's a loop road because there was some concerns early on, just conceptually, well, what about traffic? And I think something like that could certainly alleviate quite a few of the concerns, pull everybody kind of off. I mean, you, you have the luxury of a large site. So it's an idea at this point, that that's what it could look like, much like the other options. So these are not finished and polished by any means. And that's what a sixth grade addition could look like. Could you put the parking elsewhere? Could you put the fields elsewhere? Sure. But that's what it could look like there. This is a plan that those that are living through it know that you're almost home there as far as the completion of it, which is great. So the greens, the blues, that's kind of the current project. The purple is what would needed to be added to the building if you added the sixth grade and you see the little bump out for the cafeteria to try to, try to give you the capacity. Okay, so the benefits of both of these options and is it, it does improve the environment for all K to six for that first, first step, right? Think about it, it frees up, even if you're not in a building where it's going to get any kind of renovation, it gives you more room to kind of, you know, develop the curriculum programs that you want, it gives you a little more space, I guess. Maintains the majority of the current neighborhoods, maybe we need to reinforce that a little bit more with some, some alternatives to the backend of this option. And then the schools are similarly and appropriately sized and it, as I mentioned, buys time. So the yellow is just kind of some of the statistics as to what the capacity buys you. So option one obviously buys you more, it's about, well, it's really in the six, mid-sixes as far as it buys, that's what would be pulled out of the, the five, six, if you took five, six out of all the elementary schools and put it into the school, it, it gives you about 640, 50, somewhere there, students. And then, and, and the darker yellow I just put as a footnote, you know, just remember 2023, if the projections are, come true, which so far they're, they're, we picked the medium kind of level as far as the projections, not the most aggressive or not the least, it right in the middle. And so far they've kind of, the actuals have been a little bit higher, so. What's nice is the step one and either of those really touches, and I mentioned about 50, 53% of the population kind of improves their lives. Educationally, and I'm really going to just touch on it briefly, it might align, you know, five, six in the curriculums, broaden some of these specialized education pieces. So, you know, the, the education is of STEM, life skills, all of these specialized, specials, I guess, for learning have worked their way further and further down into, you know, five, grade six, grade five, and maybe even four to some level. Does create a little bit of an opportunity for better collaboration. You can maybe reallocate specialists where the, more appropriate. Teachers can specialize in improvements, potentially in social, emotional. So again, just wanted to hit those. So big picture, and again, I just want to bring it, we're almost there, so thank you for hanging with me here. This shows four, four of the projects over a 20-year period. So the life cycle, or not life cycle, but the time that it takes from initial conception through to kind of ribbon cutting is about four and a half, five years, could be longer, could be shorter if you want to be more aggressive. So that kind of shows you kind of the layout over 20 years. And then, you know, it was interesting, one of the meetings is, well, you know, we can't do that. Well, look back when you built some of these original buildings, right? So I started at 54 to 69. This is an interesting statistic. Over a 15-year span, that's what you built. So, and it was somewhere over about 260,000 square feet. So interesting to kind of compare the two, just from a history standpoint. A little bit more detail in the schedule, this would be if a step one moved ahead, you would have to go through the planning. So this is kind of almost formulaic, can you speed it up a few months? Can you, you know, can you extend it? Sure. But this gives you a little bit more detail if you started now. Let's say you gain consensus and you know what step one is going to be sometime next year. You do all your planning work, all your prep work, everybody has to vote on it, you submit, June 30th is the deadline for the state. Then you wait until December 15th until you hear, yep, you're on the priority list. And then you got to design and then you got to build. So that's that four and a half year period that, and a little bit more detail, so we can take more time if we need to on that. And then what I did is I just overlaid, like in 2022, you're at 132 more students, at 2023, you're at 215 and 282 and 24, so. So where we are in the timeline, and this is it for me, is we're here tonight to, to seek input here, your response to the options, what works well, what doesn't, what we should consider for revisions, have we considered this? So we may not be able to answer all the questions, but we certainly want to hear them all so that we can prepare responses to them. So again, we're looking for some kind of consensus and it's going to take time, it's going to take a dialogue with the community, obviously, to get to a point where everybody's on board. But that's, that's exactly why we're here tonight. Reminder, website, email questions again are there. And just hopefully it was clear, capacity and condition, so you understand the need in the elementary school. You know, we're here to assist with a long-range plan, we're not here with any kind of visions to, to force on you. We want to, this has to be a plan that works for, for the community and we look forward to hearing from you. So, so thank you.
Obviously, we want to hear from everybody and to do that, we, we're going to have to have a little bit of a plan. So we're going to give everyone three minutes and we're going to take, there's a mic there and there is a mic on this side as well. And we are going to ask you to say your name and your address and give your input, ask your questions. And we will, if there's, if you're not feeling like you're getting enough time, please feel free to write us letters or to call the Board of Ed and we can make opportunities for you to meet with us and talk to us further. But in order to get through this crowd efficiently, we want to make sure that everyone's heard tonight. So if you could be respectful of each other and take your time, but make, and watch the time as you speak. And if you are feeling like you're repeating what has already been said, if you could wait till the end, that would be really appreciated as well. Thank you.
Who's first?
The mics are open. Representative John Hampton is going to stand up and speak first. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you so much for the presentation and I want to thank the board members and the administrators for all your hard work on behalf of our own public schools. I think what troubles me the most is the transparency and openness. I, I just found out about this a week ago on Facebook. And I, I just hoping, you know, you mentioned some task force and breakout groups and I'm wondering, an initial question you can answer now or later, is how many residents and parents were on those task force? Why weren't they included early on in the session? Because this is a big deal, what we're talking about tonight. And you can tell by the size of the crowd, I think a lot of people didn't really know what was going on until a week ago or in the last few days. But I wanted to talk about our schools, that they are the crown jewel of our community and our signature asset. I'm certainly cognizant and aware of building trends, but wonder how the plans' impact on children, parents, teachers and the community has been evaluated. The final recommendation seems to favor a monolithic and costly expansion of Henry James with all the accompanying collateral effects, increase of traffic being one of them, to the detriment of both Tooton Hills and Tariffel Schools, both being targeted for repurposing or closure. And a more cost-effective plan to revamp all the schools seems to be off the table. This troubles me and in my opinion would dilute the excellence and quality of the quintessential experience of a Simsbury education that we all know is unique. And the uniqueness of our neighborhood schools, increasing class sizes, the impact on special ed, busing and other related costs, not to mention the impact on our teachers who work really hard. The strong emphasis on closing or repurposing of Tariffel School over all the other choices disturbs me the most. Over the years, Tariffel School has been one of the highest performing districts and was recognized as a top 10 school in the country for character. This historic Tariffel School is the anchor of the village and Tariffel's a major gateway to Simsbury. Tariffel's already lost its post office and a church. The closure of this elementary school would leave this part of the community behind. It'd be like cutting off one of our limbs. It'd be detrimental to home values, local businesses, affecting economic development, jobs and tourism. Tariffel has many amazing resources, its people, of course, but natural, cultural, historical and recreational. We've made great strides over the years in making stronger linkages to the village, especially with the newly proposed bikeway that's going to connect Tariffel to Simsbury. Sadly, those seeking that connection will find a village diminished and depleted. Another concern I have is related to equity. To the credit of your leadership, we're making headway on this critical issue.
Thirty seconds.
To fact, I understand that Equity Committee has just been formed. Closing a school in the lowest economic and most diverse area of town would be a major setback to the overall quality of life in Simsbury. These are just a few initial thoughts, I'm sure others will echo, but I recommend that we stop, look and listen, not to consultants, with all due respect, but to, to the citizens of Simsbury and the, and the taxpayers who know this town by heart, who know why they came to this town, because, because of its schools and all its great resources. And they deserve to be included in any plans or discussions moving forward. So thank you so much.
Next. Why don't you go?
I'll go. Okay. Hi, my name is Shannon Knoll. I live at 8 Kilborn Road. Just a couple, I'm, I gotta move this. Just a couple of, of comments I noticed in the presentation. Special education was not in any of the slides. There was no mention of special education anywhere. And certainly, students in special education are part of the population increases in town and deserve some consideration for how we are going to educate them appropriately. I have some concerns about, a couple of, both of the options mentioned, actually. Option one seemed to put a pre-K at Terrifield along with Board of Ed offices, and I'm wondering where the pre-K Ready, Set, Go students would be? Would they be at Terrifield? And how would that impact busing? That would likely not be their neighborhood schools, and we know from IDEA recommendations that putting a student with special education needs in their home school district is most beneficial. Not to mention the anxiety of transporting a student who might have some special needs or accommodations across town to attend a preschool. I have the same concerns with option two, about where would Ready, Set, Go be housed? And do we have an opportunity here to re-appropriate our schools so that our special education students are able to be appropriately educated in their own school districts? Just something for consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Do you have a mic? It's not on.
That's okay.
Do you want to come to this one?
And I think from an architect's point of view, you made a very good presentation, but what you missed is the whole community and academics that are Simsbury schools. I've been substituted in Simsbury schools, 812, I've substituted at all the Avon schools, all the Canton schools, New Britain schools, New York schools, I did a semester at the high school. I know our schools. What makes our schools great, and they are great, because our elementary schools rank 14th, 16th, 20th, 24th, 25th in Harkett County. And our awesome magnet schools with all their new construction, amazing convenience centers, lost motorrad rooms, tons of storage, new, new, new. The best-ranking magnet school, which has been around for over five years, 45th in Harkett County. New is not bad. Number two. My second point is when it comes to adding sixth grade to our middle school. Every study I looked at today, every single one says it's a bad idea. In 1987, adding sixth grade to seventh, eighth, by the year 2000, almost three-quarters of our schools in the country were sixth, seventh, eighth. Looking at the data now, 10 years ago, our schools across the country have started reverting back to K to eight, because when sixth grade is added to seventh and eighth, the sixth graders perform lower on academic scores. Their incidence of discipline are four times higher, their incidence of drug use, two times higher. And that doesn't stop just because they get to eighth grade. It continues into ninth grade because they've been here for sixth, seventh, eighth. So I think we're late coming to the game without adding six to seven, eight, because now the pendulum is swinging the other way based on data that they've gotten across the country. Now, if you want to look up any of this information, itch.com has all the rankings of all public schools, and I, every single study I looked at looks at the sixth grade. What makes our schools great is our superintendent, and our administrators, and our principals, and our teachers, and our staff. I can absolutely tell you, every single one of our elementary schools have a very unique culture. It's very different from every other one.
Three minutes. Thank you. Thank you very much. That's it. Thank you.
My name is Chat Matzik. I live at 18 Worcester Road in Terrifield. I'd like to follow up on some of what Representative Hampton had to say. My wife and I have no children, we've never had any children in the school system for the last 20 years. I don't normally spend time on the Board of Education website as a result, and I had no idea this study was in progress until I received an email from John Hampton. I seriously question the stated goal of transparency in this study. Just a general comment. I spent a lot of time trying to digest the documentation, in particular, two documents, the one from 10-1-19, which presents Option One, which we've talked about quite a bit. Renovate is new for all the elementary schools. The document which follows on 11-12-19 eliminates that option and boils the decision down to two preferred options, both of which eliminate Terrifield School as an actual school serving elementary grades of children. The Option One, I don't know if it comes through to everybody, but that's a $100 million project. It's the other projects that you're talking about adding on $40 to $50 million? So Option One is a considerably cheaper option, unless I'm misunderstanding, so please correct me if I'm wrong.
Okay, we're going to just finish, I'm sorry. Time's, we'll get there.
My question to you involves two related issues. What was the basis for eliminating Option One, which happened between 10-1 and 11-12? It's not clear in the document exactly which group made that decision, what factors the decision was based on, and why there are no minutes of meetings which document that process? I don't find minutes anywhere. Related to that question, how do the recommendations of this study square with the 2017 Plan of Conservation and Development? The P O C D, remember that, two years ago? A lot of work was done. A lot of work has been, been done here, and I know how much work it takes to come up with these kinds of options and crunch all these numbers. But it doesn't appear that the Board of Education made any attempt
Thirty seconds.
...to incorporate design concepts that were developed in the Plan of Conservation and Development. What you're talking about doing in Terrifield goes totally against the Plan of Conservation and Development. Which one really is going to be the regulation here? Which one takes precedence? Is it the B O E's desire or the Plan of Conservation and Development?
Third, three minutes. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go right here. Okay. My name is Catherine Oaks. I'm a 33-year resident of 14 Hunting Ridge Drive. I came tonight to talk about, to comment and see about the plan, to look at what's going on, and I also wanted to bring this up, and this is the Plan of Conservation and Development. It's done every 10 years by many commissions, committees, and groups of people in town to come together and talk about how they want to see the growth of this town and what they'd like to see going on. There are lots of recommendations in here, I'm going to read some of the highlights, and it's, it's very good reading, Town Hall has them, you can go pick one up. One of the key aspects, the, the goals of this plan is to maintain and enhance community character, promote places with a sense of place. They specifically call out Terrifield. To guide residential development, protect existing neighborhoods. And I also want to note that this plan is also in, in line with state and regional guidelines as well, so we're not off on a, on a tangent here. Everybody's in line with this. They mention on page 66, specifically mentioned Terrifield. The goal here is, and everyone agrees on this, maintaining and enhancing Terrifield is an important strategy in the Plan of Conservation and Development. Knowing that, knowing that Terrifield School is an intrinsic part of the community, the village of Terrifield, is there anyone in this room who seriously believes that eliminating a vibrant, award-winning school with an engaged community and replacing it with administrative offices would be in any way beneficial to Terrifield and ultimately Simsbury, since we are part of Simsbury? So I would suggest, the information is interesting, it's, it's, I think it's incomplete, very incomplete. I'm wondering, why did you start a project like this, knowing that this is recommended? Any project that is done in town, it's recommended that you go up against and hold it up against this Plan of Development, because this is done and created by the residents of Simsbury. Why would you come up with a plan that has no name, no, no notion or no relation to this plan? I'm a little stumped. Why go this far? It's, it's too little, too soon? I would go back to the drawing board on it, and we'd be happy to give input, thoughtful input, based not on numbers, but on a sense of place and what we value about this community, all of this community.
Thank you.
I'll go, Crystal.
Go ahead, Jen.
She's my neighbor. Jennifer Wilson, 23 Worcester Road. Not only am I a Terrifield parent, I am a Terrifield graduate. So when my husband and I were looking on where to live, it wasn't Simsbury we chose, it was Terrifield. And I want to make that distinction, not as an insult, but it was a thoughtful decision that we made. And we did that for its diversity, its sense of community, and the philosophy of how Terrifield School works. They worked tirelessly to create that community. These teachers attend football games, first communions, theater performances, all on their weekends. And you can hear me get emotional, because I had two children, confident, academically prepared, and felt that they were ready to conquer the world because of the foundation they got at Terrifield. As the district focuses their work on equity, I ask you to consider how equitable this decision to close Terrifield is. As the most diverse school in Simsbury, they have been implementing equitable practices for years. And I can tell you that because I have two children of color. And if we are going to be taking on equity as a district, then Terrifield School should be looked at the model and not closed. Although I understand the need for fiscal management in these times, and as an educator, I understand these difficult decisions, I beg you to put the children first and take the option of closing Terrifield off the table.
Please, you, please?
No, I got it. They were clapping. I wanted to make sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
We heard. Thank you. So I'm Crystal Gonzalez, I live on 16 Worcester Road. So I lead and co-lead various diversity and inclusion initiatives at a Fortune 100 company. I also, sorry, I'm actually a little nervous. And diversity and inclusion, simply put, is having representation from different backgrounds and experiences, and everyone feeling accepted. So I want to give you a couple of facts about my family here in Simsbury, Connecticut. So, one, we decided to purchase our home in Simsbury, Connecticut because of primarily Terrifield Elementary School. At the time, we knew we wanted children, and Terrifield Elementary School had been nationally recognized as a top 10 school in the country for character, as well as it had a strong brand outside of Simsbury. And I, yes, I heard about it at the company I work for. I was also, fact number two, had career progression opportunities in cities that are considered great for young families, such as Scottsdale, Arizona, and San Antonio, Texas. The reason, primarily, I am no longer mobile is because of my daughter's education. Education was my medium out of poverty, and we made a conscious decision to raise our family in this school system, specifically Terrifield Elementary School. My daughter is in her first year in Terrifield Elementary School, fact number three, Caroline Gonzalez, and she is, this school has exceeded all of our expectations. Mind you, I've gone to nine different schools personally before going to college. So the staff is a family, they are part of our community, okay? I always feel welcome, and I do actually know the majority of the staff at Terrifield Elementary School. I feel blessed to watch the girls on our street walk to school together, as well as other children ride their bikes and scooters into school. Our community is truly the American dream for me. Tara, thank you, because I did send an email that captured a lot of this to the Board of Ed. My friends own a multifamily home in Terrifield, and I was on business travel last week. They sent over some information about a property. They said, hey, you might want to consider investing in this property to rent out. All of this came up, I'll tell you right now, we're no longer interested, because we don't know what the future is, and we're not taking that risk. So to conclude, I'm not sure what the purpose or ultimate goals of all the proposals are. I get the data that you've shared, but if you're looking to attract young families such as mine and others that have moved into Terrifield over the past several years, as well as engage the community and grow, these options do not align with these goals, and I can tell you right now, Terrifield does not support them. Future thinking, if the strategy, strategy is to repurpose Terrifield, Terrifield, the borough, the village, and drive out young families, lower-income folks, people of color like myself, and folks that are retired or retiring with concerns of the impacts to their property values, then you would continue down these two paths. I know these are strong statements, but it's important to be genuine and share the true impact to the community. I see the benefits of broad ideas, different experiences, inclusion and acceptance, acceptance, especially to the bottom line, and I hope you all choose wisely. Thank you.
You, please.
Hi, my name is Lisa Burke. We're at 20 Michael Road in Simsbury. My kid, obviously Simsbury, I wouldn't be here. My kids are fifth generation in towns, so we are very invested in the community, and as a parent, I'm very invested in the education that we get here. So I really commend the group for looking forward and trying to really think about what the needs are, and not just at one school, but really across the district. I've been very impressed by everything I've heard tonight, how thoughtful the planning has been. I know that, you know, there is a lot of emotion around Terrifield, and I, you know, that's not my school, so I'm not going to even touch on that. But there are wonderful schools throughout town, and I think, you know, as we've seen in squadron, as we're getting more students, my kids' classes are getting bigger and bigger. So I almost feel like we're even a little bit behind the eight ball on this, and we should have maybe been doing this a couple of years ago so that we could have a new school opening in the next couple of years. But I do appreciate that we're doing this now, and we're working on it now. I absolutely support investment in our schools and investment in our town. I know there's been a lot of brouhaha around town that our property values are not rising as quickly as some of our neighboring towns. And if we fail to make this investment and we fail to do what's right for our students, that not just impacts our kids' education and, you know, puts stress on the buildings we have, on the, on the excellent faculties we have at all these schools, but it impacts our property values. Because when people come and they want a town with excellent schools, they, they're, you know, if we're continuing to have classes with 25, 26 students, they're not going to see that in Simsbury. And yes, we're 25 here, 26 there, I actually don't know the exact numbers, but I don't want to see us fall. I want to see us only rise in those rankings. So I appreciate the investment, I appreciate the really thoughtful evaluation. I know there was a lot of concern, if we added more students to this facility or this campus, there would be a lot of traffic on FireTown, so I really appreciated that you specifically pointed out, you know, the, the road that would go around the campus to, to alleviate some of that, so excellent. But after everything I just said, and my time and wasted most of my time, I'm really up here because I promised my daughter that I would speak and, and share what she thinks tonight. Because as every parent would know, the best time to get any input from your kids is in the car. And we had a 20-minute ride home from Hebrew School today. I had a couple of kids in the car, a fifth grader and a fourth grader, and they very strongly feel that a fifth and sixth grade school would be a better community for them, they'd be more comfortable there, and they feel like it would be a good transition to middle school, and that being a sixth grader with seventh and eighth graders would be too much for them, and the ages would be too different. So that was absolutely, both girls, granted it's a sample size of two, I do research for a living, but both girls did not very, or did not waver, they really felt very strongly, they really... sixth grade school would be a better community for them, they'd be more comfortable there, and they feel like it would be a good transition to middle school, and that being a sixth grader with seventh and eighth graders would be too much for them, and the ages would be too different. So that was absolutely, both girls, granted it's a sample size of two, I do research for a living, but, both girls did not waver, they really felt very strongly, they really liked the idea of a fifth and sixth grade campus here, and they felt that sixth grade was too old to be in elementary school.
Thank you very much.[588.66][588.66](applause) Now we're back to this.
I'm Sherri Landerman, I live at 48 Elm Street in Terriffill since 1983, and I've been a Realtor in town for more than three decades. I did some research on other schools, other towns' school facility master plans, and they had a list of pros. And I was wondering why I didn't see some of these pros as being asked when you were talking about potentially closing Terriffill School? For instance, does it increase the capacity of the school? Remove portables, okay. Stay away from mega schools? Is it an investment in the community? Does it have positive economic impact? Does it lower the operational cost or the lowest bond cost? Is there potential reduction of transportation costs? Does it align with the common core values for development in the community? Does it maintain a neighborhood model? Does it increase property values? Does it increase walking and biking capacity? Huge issue in our community. Does it help with accreditation standards? We're already great. Does it facilitate the equity progress? It's apparent to me that closing the Terriffill School doesn't really align with any of these pros, because it's just not there. Also, where's the money coming from? In 2015, the Great Blue Survey was done in conjunction with the senior center proposal that had a $12 million price tag. Its results are on the town website. Was a survey to gather similar data done for the potential $100 million-plus expenditure for this school. As a Realtor, I know that most people, when they're considering where they want to live, they look at the community, they look at the neighborhood, they look at their commuting, they look at a lot of things, but they don't look at decimating where they buy. You're talking about a community in Terriffill, what about traffic? Was there even a traffic study done? How do we safely transport our students across the river? We have Route 315, one windy, hilly, no-shoulder state road from Terriffill into Simsbury that has more heavy trucks and traffic flow than it should even be allowed. Very recently, there was a car that overturned on Route 315, and there was an extended closure. And that's just one incident of many over the years. The POCD, as I see, has a clear goal of wanting to preserve and enhance our village. I think funds saved by the lesser expense, which would be renovating some of the schools as new, could go into other options and reinvested into programs and amenities that advance educational and economic development in our town, rather than just creating larger and newer school facilities.
Thirty seconds.
Okay. I don't have kids.[768.44][768.44](laughing) Anyway, also, closing the school would be like ripping the heartbeat out of the community, and that is already an ailing village. We've lost post office and an anchor religious facility, and have floundered to encourage new business opportunities. We've been fighting to rebound from the broken windows theory, where our existing blight abandoned and shuttered residences and shuttered business storefronts affect property values, crime, and present a decrepit gateway to the center of, a decrepit gateway into Simsbury. We could choose to tap our underutilized potential as a beautiful historic village with wonderful human and natural resources, or we could create a ghost town.
Thank you, can you finish up?
Yep, save our school, save our village.
Thank you very much.[821.13][821.13](applause) We're going over here?
Yes, thank you. Paul Henault, 12 Wingate. First, before I say anything, I just want to give complete transparency to the audience that my wife was a teacher at Terriffill, recently retired.[831.51][831.51](applause) And I spent 18 years on the Board of Finance, 15 of those as chairman. Those made for some very interesting discussions at home, but we had separate careers, so that was fine. And I also want to say that, you know, the people up here, for the most part, are volunteers, and they're trying to do the best thing for Simsbury. So keep that in mind. And I'm very happy that I'm not the first speaker up here, because I've heard people come up here and give their opinion, and they've all been very respectful, very respectful. And that, I think, leads to the character of Simsbury, the character of Terriffill.[878.36][878.36](applause) Now, what I really want to say also is that, you know, Terriffill is a very diverse community. We all know that. You have Pinnacle Mountain, you have Eno Farms, you have the Heights, so that has led to a very interesting character in Terriffill that should be preserved. You also, you also want to continue to have neighborhood schools. The neighborhood schools are the things that have really brought excellence to Simsbury, in my opinion. I'm not a native of Simsbury, but I've lived here since 1980, except for four years, we were in San Francisco, but on a corporate transfer. But, you know, it really is a special place, and we want to preserve that. Now, I will just bring back one thing here, that one major point that I want to bring. And when I was on the Board of Finance, the Board of Education brought forward a project to build a $95 million high school. We went through all the analysis of what we saw today, which, by the way, was excellent. This was one of the best presentations I've ever seen, and I think you deserve a lot, and the Board deserves a lot. But at that time, we said, wait a minute, we just cannot afford this. So when it got to the Board of Finance, that project was killed. We said, please, go back to the drawing board, come up with something different, and they did. They came up with a renovation to the high school, which, at the end of the day, cost the town about $34, $35 million. I may be off by a million here, a million there, but it was roughly in that, it went from 95 down here.
Thirty seconds.
So my summary would be, please, go back to the drawing board, come up with an option three, and I do think you'll get the support of the community, you'll get the support of Terriffill, and you'll get the support of Simsbury overall, for the project that does go out all the years and will meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1014.32][1014.32](applause)
Good evening. My name's Lori Matzek, I live at 18 Worcester Road in Terriffill. I've been asked to read a letter by another resident on Worcester Road. The letter is from Jennifer Sanborn, who unfortunately had a prior commitment and could not be here tonight. This letter was originally sent by email and distributed, the distribution included this group, as well as Matt Curtis and John Hampton, as well as others. Okay. Good morning. My name is Jennifer Sanborn, my husband and I moved to the village of Terriffill, Worcester Road, a cul-de-sac behind the elementary school, in 2006, with our kindergarten-age daughter and two-year-old son. Our daughter graduated from Simsbury High School last spring, and our son is a sophomore. We moved to our home because a leader in the school system told me that Terriffill Elementary School was, and is, the very best school in Simsbury, and the community aligned with our values and way of life. There were and always, excuse me, there were in our ways, our family does not resonate with the affluence we see in much of the town of Simsbury. We are middle-income, professional people, desiring to live in a community with people from different backgrounds, with different means, and we want the best for our kids. What a gift that could find, all of this in this little village. I've read the reports, and I understand the population trends, as well as the broader dynamics of what these projects are trying to accomplish for the school buildings. I am reaching out to ask where and how the community impact is being evaluated. As you know, the village of Terriffill sits across the river from the town of Simsbury, already separated and somewhat isolated from the broader community. We're proud of that distinction in many ways, but it also has costs. What has allowed the village to retain a sense of strong future, even with the post office not being reopened and the Catholic Church closed, a growing number of homes remain unsold and vacant, but the school is there. Other areas of town, in the absence of a neighborhood school, would remain more effectively integrated into the broader life and community of Simsbury, because they do not have the barrier of the river, however subconscious it may be. I fear that turning this elementary school into a pre-K/Board of Education building would result in a village of kids relegated to long bus rides for their entire school year, uh, career. A rapid exodus of village, from the village by families like ours, who moved here for the school, and have long presumed our homes to have eventual resale value because of the school. There is a loss for the entire town.
Thank you very much.
I'm going to say one more thing. I don't have kids. I wouldn't have looked on the Board of Ed thing. But I am very concerned about my home value going down if you close that school, and I'm not the only one in the village.
Thank you.[1198.15][1198.15](applause)
My name is Holly Caffey, I live at 8 Gordon Street. I'm sorry, I'm a little emotional, but if you look out, there's a sea of blue and gray. And all of our teachers are here, so many of my daughter's teachers, she's in fifth grade. I went to Terriffill School. My mother went to Terriffill School. My son is in my same kindergarten classroom. It's so special, and I know you've heard that from so many people, and I don't want to beat a dead horse, so to say, but the fact is, it is a small school, and that's what makes it so great. And I'm so afraid of, if we change and repurpose and move things around too much, that we will have these 30 student classrooms, and that is not okay. I am a special education teacher, so the person who spoke earlier about special education not being mentioned at all, I'm right there with her. That is the one, that is the only one thing I would love to see about Terriffill change, is that we need an elevator. We need some way for students with special needs to be able to get to the second floor. But I know Tooten Hills, I know Lateral Lane, they're all small neighborhood schools. Kids who go to Tooten walk, a lot of them. And my children, I couldn't walk to Terriffill, because I live on Gordon Street, I'm on the other side of the river, but I appreciate how important that is, because there is a whole village, like they said, of students who can walk, who can go on their bike, who don't have to ride a bus. There is something to be said, smaller is better. We all know that. That's, all of the research has shown us that, smaller is better. The other nice woman who said her child had wanted to give her input, my daughter also wanted me to make sure I shared hers, she's in fifth grade. She also agrees that she wouldn't want to go to sixth grade in the middle school, she would be afraid. And at the same time, she said, but I don't really want to be with kindergarteners when I'm in sixth grade either. So that five to six maybe makes sense. I hadn't really thought about it as a parent, but in putting myself in her shoes, our fifth and sixth graders are kind of their own animal. They're a little bit different, they're not little, but they're not big. I do see the benefit, though, of having older students with our younger students, they are wonderful role models. Wonderful.[1353.15][1353.15](applause) My fifth grader works with kindergarteners, works with first graders, she loves doing that, it's something that makes her feel good about herself and important, and our kids need to feel important. On the other hand, my kindergartner said, no, don't take my sister. I want her to be with me. So the little ones, maybe they like, I think they also feel comfortable, and then they have the older kids that are there with them. So K through four is not, that would not be my ideal. I feel like there's all too little. I like that K to five, K to six, I still like it. My daughter says, eh, five, six can be themselves.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.[1395.15][1395.15](applause)
Now move over here?
My name's Brian Mauer. I'm a resident of Terriffill, I live at 19 Maple Street in the Village. I commend you, sir, for a very well-thought-out and well-researched and well-presented presentation this evening. I cannot speak to statistics. I cannot speak to projections. I can only speak from the heart. My spouse and I took up residence in the village of Terriffill back in 1981, when we moved from Pennsylvania to Connecticut, so I could pursue graduate work in the field of pediatric medicine. At that time, our oldest child was four years of age. Since then, each of our four children have attended Terriffill School, and subsequently graduated from Simsbury High School. My wife and I own our own home, and remain members of the Terriffill Community to this day. Presently, three of our seven grandchildren are poised to begin their kindergarten year at Terriffill School within the next couple of years. Of the five elementary schools in the Simsbury educational system, Terriffill School is unique. Historically, I believe it is the oldest, dating back to 1925, and as has been said before, it has received recognition as a national school of character. It has consistently offered small class sizes with low teacher-student ratios. Students have excelled in the intimate academic environment and gone on to do well, furthering their education beyond high school. A love of education nurtured in the early years of life is one of the best ways to ensure continued success in lifelong learning. More than that, Terriffill School has functioned as a social hub for the community. The annual Halloween Parade has historically included the school, where families in the community gather, reinforcing neighborhood relationships. Village residents still walk to Terriffill School to cast their votes on Election Day. Children and families use the facility grounds for play and recreation when the school is not in session. Closing Terriffill School would not only be detrimental to the quality education of our children and grandchildren, it would remove one of the few remaining hubs of community life in the village. Disbanding this high-quality educational facility will accelerate the decline of communal life in the village. It may take a village to raise a child, but it also demands a quality local school to do so in the community setting. Thank you.
Thank you very much.[1611.83][1611.83](applause)
Good evening. My name is Anna De La Fei, I live at 5 High Hill Circle in Wheaton. I'm a Latimer parent. I just wanted to reiterate, I am definitely not in support of closing any school, and there's a lot of emotion in here, and I think we all feel that, and that's a very good thing to be proud of. But like the two previous speakers who spoke right before me, size does matter, and class sizes are, need to be small. And I will tell you, being at the school whose growth has exponentially grown, that's not the case for our school. My daughter's class size, first grade, is 22 kids, the other two first-grade classes are about the same, if not more. And our schools, our school is literally busting at the seams. And so I think we definitely need to look at something to be done, and I think this plan is a very good starting point, and I think we need to really revisit what that impact is going to be for all of us. But I definitely see that something needs to happen within the one-to-four-year mark, even before this building starts to happen. Right now, we're at a crossroads, we cannot absorb any and all of this growth that is already happening along Hop Meadow. Latimer just can't physically house anymore. And I know that we are suffering academically because of it. It's very hard to teach a class that is 22 to 26 kids, it's very hard for our teachers. And we have some amazing teachers at our school, and we do at all of our schools here, let's be honest. That's the reason that we moved here. But one of the reasons when I moved here too, was that the class sizes were going to be small. And I have not seen that since my seventh grader now has been in here. So I think we need to really look at the plans, I think there's obviously a lot of passion here in this room. I think closing schools may not be the option. I definitely think that we need to look, though, more closely at the interim, what needs to happen. even before this building starts to happen. Um, right now, we're at a crossroads. We cannot absorb any and all of this growth that is already happening along Hop Meadow. Latimer just can't physically house anymore. And I know that we are suffering academically because of it. It's very hard to teach a class that is twenty-two to twenty-six kids. It's very hard for our teachers, and we have some amazing teachers at our school, and we do at all of our schools here, let's be honest. That's the reason that we moved here. But one of the reasons when I moved here, too, um, was that the class sizes were going to be small. And I have not seen that since my seventh grader now, um, has been in here. So I think we need to really look at the plans. I think there's obviously a lot of passion here in this room. I think closing schools may not be the option. I definitely think that we need to look, though, more closely at the interim, what needs to happen within the next few years, because this growth is very much affecting all of our children. Thank you, I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
I'm John Nagy. I live at seventy-one Winthrop Street, and I'm the president of the Terriffill Village Association. I'd like to thank the Board of Ed for all the hard work that you've done over the years to produce a first-rate school system for the town of Simsbury. I think we need to give them all a round of applause. I personally benefited from it. I'm a graduate of Simsbury High School in nineteen sixty-eight, when it was new. I appreciated that it was a beautiful new school, and I got to go there. And I would love to have a beautiful new school in Terriffill, too. Whether that happens or not, uh, is a key issue, obviously, for me. Uh, the school is the center of our village and has been, um, not only since nineteen twenty-five, but, uh, the Terr, the first Terriffill District School was built in eighteen sixty-five. Prior to that, there were three, uh, small, one-room schoolhouses, going back to eighteen fifty. And the, uh, village was founded in eighteen twenty-five, so we've had an educational presence, uh, for well over a hundred and seventy years. Uh, as I say, the school functions at the, and many people have said the school functions at the heart of the village. To take the school out would be to rip out the, uh, part of our, fabric of our community. This isn't the first time, though, uh, that this issue, issue has come up. Uh, as a matter of fact, in two thousand and five, we, uh, filled the cafeteria at Terriffill School when the board at that time was, uh, considering closing Terriffill School. But that also was not the first time. Uh, I mentioned it to my former accountant, uh, who happened to be, um, on the Board of Finance in, um, the nineteen sixties, and his comment was, "Are they still trying to close Terriffill School?" So I don't know what it is, I'm starting to get a complex. But I know that, I know that the building is old, and I, I, I make light of it, but I understand the problems are serious, and the problems are important, and we have to find a solution that works not only for, uh, the Simsbury school system, but also for the village of Terriffill. Now, I know it's not the purview of the, uh, Board of Education, uh, to, to do community planning, but at the same, by the same token, the, uh, decisions that you make affect the community, and they have to be considered. So I would just like to say that, uh, the Terriffill Village Association stands ready to consider alternatives. I think we need to think outside the box. Terriffill is a unique situation, uh, requiring a unique solution, and, uh, we thank you for your time and, uh, and all your-
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Mark Scully, twenty-nine Knatch Road in West Simsbury. I'd like to start by just saying it's really a pleasure being here at Henry James. I, I went to this school, my three boys went to this school, and my father, John Scully, taught here for about twenty-five years. I'm, I'm speaking tonight not only as a, as a resident, but as a member of the Simsbury Clean Energy Task Force, and my request and my suggestion is really a simple one, that very early in our planning and in our goal-setting, that any construction that we do, whether it's new construction or renovations, be net-zero energy. And what that means is that by a little additional planning upfront, insulating the building really well, uh, making it very airtight, positive ventilation and modern appliances, we, we can, by spending a little more time and, 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 and money upfront, we can literally lower our energy costs to zero. So we should not do that just out of economic reasons, but we need to do that so that we leave our kids not only great schools, but a planet they can live on. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. My name's Frank Salz. Um, I'm not with these people, I moved. I'm at twenty Hazel Meadows, Simsbury. No, I'm only kidding. We spent two hundred thousand dollars on a, on a really well-put-together plan, and I wanna thank the town that did it, and I wanna, oh, Sharon, welcome. I hope it's easier than this from here on out. I'm sure it will be. Um, and I wanna thank Matt, he sat down with me for much longer than he should have and explained some things. He took me through some baby steps, and I appreciate it. So I worked on that the entire time since I met him till now, and then I found out none of that stuff is, uh, is the issue. But what I am gonna do is read, "Option one: All existing elementary schools renovated as new. Renovate all existing elementary schools as new and keep current grade configurations." This is called Option One, and I know it's not anybody's Option One, it's just on the minutes. I couldn't get by the minutes, but it states, "This option maintains neighborhood schools." Anybody here for neighborhood schools? And addresses the shortage space at Latimer. Additionally, this option has the potential to be the lowest construction cost, as there are no new buildings, and we know if there's no new buildings, we get more money from the feds and the state if we fix them up rather than build new. This project is a hundred million dollars. It states later, from the report, "The preliminary look at the exo, the costs associated with various options indicated that Option Would, one, would be approximate cost of a hundred million and saves potentially fifty million dollars. Fifty million dollars in our issues are squareway. We don't have, we don't have to deal with the traffic up here. People can back out of Firetown. Terriffill School will be there, Latimer will be there, Tooten, Squadron, and Central for fifty million dollars less than some of the options available." And if you thought tonight's traffic was bad, and I hope people brought stuff for the turkey trot, it's gonna be worse than this every day, because there will be more kids here than at the high school, and if this is your neighborhood, I'm sorry. I'm sorry to these people in Terriffill, but I'm sorry if this is your neighborhood. Zoning just approved fifty, fifty-four units between Great Pond and Owens Brook. Now granted, they're in the McLean thing, but they all have cars, they all have visitors, so add another fifty residences. That being said, very quickly, everybody knows about the new bridge?
Can you wrap up?
Flower Bridge? Yeah, shake, clap, you know Flower Bridge? Football team, Jake and Juan, clap. We have a rainbow walkway? Clap. How old are we next year?
Three years.
Everybody knows that. Did anybody last week know that this was even happening?
No.
You knew all that stuff? When did this pop up? A week after the elections? Fifty million dollars, people, we can fix this and go home. Fifty million.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bruce Thompson, uh, twenty-four Chestnut Hill. I've got a twenty-six-year-old that went through the whole system and is happily out working and doing successful. Thank you, Board of Ed, thank you for the education. I've, I've also got a sixth grader at Tooten, and in all the presentation, you know, great, what I saw was putting numbers into boxes to make it all work. What I didn't see was the vision on, is, is putting sixth graders in here the best for them academically. Is, I've been through the early bus and the late bus in the morning, is it better to have the sixth graders out at six forty-five to get on the bus? Do they need to grow up faster? I like having my little girl doing book buddy at Tooten with the little kids. It's part of the flavor. So, I mean, I appreciate the, the consulting side, but I really, I'd like to hear the academic side. Is there really a rationale, or can we make it work, as was just said, keeping the one through six, seven, eight, and working within our current schools? Thanks very much.
Thank you very much. Please, if we can keep, if we can just listen to our speakers, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
How's it going, everyone? My name's Nathan Donahue. Uh, I've lived at thirty-four Hayes Road for twenty-two years now. First, I just wanna say thank you to the Board of Education for providing me my own education. Uh, I graduated from Simsbury High back in twenty fifteen. Um, anyways, I, I also really appreciate the PowerPoint tonight, all the information you provided. I'm also a big fan of numbers, of spreadsheets, um, and because of that, I would kinda wanna go over some of the impacts, uh, that I've looked at, some of the studies over the past two decades or so. This one study in particular, um, specifically looks at small villages ranging from five-hundred to twenty-five-hundred residents, kind of like Terriffill with twelve-hundred or so, and the impact of about twenty-six states, fifteen-hundred schools that were closed or repurposed, uh, over the past two decades or so, and what that impact had on the community. Uh, one of the big things was the values of properties and real estate going down from a range of anywhere from six percent up to twenty-five percent. Uh, just to make that aware, in reference, the median house value is about two-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand dollars or so in Simsbury, uh, and then in Terriffill alone, it's around two-hundred thousand, about two-thirds, or sixty-six percent. If we were to get rid of Terriffill School, that would probably drop down to about a hundred and fifty, or about half of that in Simsbury. Uh, I'd also like to note that it also has a, uh, a big impact on how we see our income in Terriffill specifically, as we see an influx of that more low-income population of those families, they'll be moving in, uh, to Terriffill, um, which would really put, or would really widen the gap, um, uh, the, the income gap between Simsbury and Terriffill. I kinda have a struggle with that, uh, living here over twenty-two years or so, and, uh, what that would have on everyone that lives in Terriffill, all the residents, my family included. Uh, the other thing I wanted to, to note was the issue of diversity. Uh, everyone has stated here so far, a lot of people have, that Terriffill is a school about diversity, about character and all that. Um, our superintendent once said, a couple years back, "If we fail to expose our students to diversity, we fail to prepare them for a globalized world." This is in reference to the Open Choice Program, bringing in students from Hartford into Terriffill, into Simsbury. Why would we want to eliminate that opportunity for our children to be-
Thirty seconds.
Of course. Um, uh, to be exposed to such diversity by getting rid of Terriffill School. Uh, I also just wanna say I did graduate from Terriffill School, and I wanted to say thank you to all of my teachers, Ms. Henall, Ms. Brown, Ms. Grossman, she's over there somewhere. Uh, if I miss others, I'm sorry about that, but, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Uh, my name is Becky Mahoney. Um, my address is sixteen Park Road. Um, I am a Latimer Lane parent and, uh, former PTO president for three years at Latimer. Um, I appreciate the huge challenge that the Board of Ed must tackle with respect to our changing town demographics and aging school infrastructure. I know that, uh, as caring town residents yourselves, you take this important task very seriously and with the best interests of our families and children firmly in mind. I attended the public forum last spring, and I listened to the consultant's findings then. Um, in terms of transparency in this process, I personally feel like it has been very transparent. I was well-aware of the meetings, um, through my email, from the town, from the school. Um, so I do feel like you have done a very good job trying to get the public involved throughout this process since last spring. Um, excuse me. Um, I've been eagerly awaiting the recommendations to the school since the spring. I believe their study was extremely thorough and conducted in good faith, and that the recommendations we are discussing tonight take into account the results presented last spring, and the resulting impact from community members who attended the meeting or viewed the presentation online and reached out to you. As BOE members, and actually, you addressed this earlier, um, I did wanna point out that the, and I'm sure you're aware, that the Latimer projections are already two years out of schedule, so that is a big concern for our neck of the woods. Um, I believe that the administration has done a wonderful job repurposing the space within the school to accommodate the rapidly growing numbers, but as I understand things, we are about two classrooms shy of capacity, and most likely will fill in at least one of those classrooms before the next school year. The building is old, there is no way to increase the common spaces, such as the art room, the tiny library, or the gym and cafeteria where all of our community events are held. We are bursting. It is standing room only at most events, as such as family fun nights and concerts. Our upper wing that houses grades four through six can only be reached by a set of stairs, excuse me, grades three, three through six. No access for people with wheelchairs. Latimer desperately needs both short-term and long-term solutions to the increasing student population and the outdated, out-of-code building. Tonight, I highlight these issues at Latimer, but I realize that we are not the only school that requires the attention of our town to accommodate an influx of students and the changing nature of primary education. I support a forward-thinking solution based on data that takes into account the needs of the entire Simsbury School District community and the thousands of children that go to school in this town now and in the future. I appreciate the thoughtful process that the BOE has undertaken to meet this challenge, and I hope for a solution that accommodates the needs of all throughout the town right now and in the years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please go right in.
Hi, my name's Leslie Burby. I live at nineteen Drumlin, and I have three kids in Tooten. I moved here specifically for the education, and I am known around the world for my education policies that I helped implement around the world, for specifically special ed kids. I have three special needs children. When I had to find a new home after a very messy divorce, um, I know all too well what towns do not provide for their special needs kids, and I knew that Simsbury did. And we came here, and we would like to stay here. And I have got to say that Tooten has been amazing for my children. They've grown so much. But that aside, I have, I have some questions. If we close those elementary schools and we repurpose them, if they're not good enough for our education students, why are they good enough for pre-K? My second question is special ed. You guys provide amazing special ed because of your amazing staff. Yes, you do not meet all ADA and IDA/EA recommendations, um, because you're missing elevators and you're missing some things, but the accommodations and the flexibility that the staff has provided is, surpasses any other town I've ever worked with, and I've worked with several towns. You need to ask yourself not only how much is this going to cost, but if you do not meet the special ed requirements and you have to outsource those students to special needs schools, how much is that gonna cost your town? Because I guarantee you, that's a lot more costly than keeping these kids here. So, consider that in your analysis. Sixth grade, just take that off the table. The sixth graders need to stay in elementary school. That is a huge sell. It's one of the key points why I moved here, and my girls are so happy.
Thirty seconds.
So happy that they got one more year to just be a kid. Um, and they're awesome at being book buddies. Um, another point I wanted to make was, I just attended the superintendent, um, conference a week ago in Mystic, and a huge, huge part of education nowadays and coming up is collaboration spaces and adaptable spaces, so that can grow with size, so keep that in mind when you are doing your projections, please, um, because that will help you, because you never know when, you know, a family with three special needs kids may move in. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Katie Moriarty, uh, one Crestview Road, Terriffill. I've spoken with parents who live in towns that have students that go to schools for two to three years, then move to their next level of school. The schools have ten, ten to fifteen classes of each grade. Every year, students get divided up, so they may only have one or two students in their classes from the year before. A lot of kids are outgoing and adapt, but there are many shy kids that shut down and withdraw. Both of my children are shy. At Terriffill, the teachers recognized that my son would only talk when he had one special friend by his side. The teachers purposely put the two boys in the same classroom for five years, because they knew my son would open up much faster. Two years ago, my daughter- Two years ago, my daughter got a new friend that moved from Japan. I asked her mother why she chose Terriffill. She said that she came and toured six schools. Terriffill was the only school that had their students give the tour, and the students were able to answer all of her questions. As an English teacher and an educator, that told her a lot about the school. When I mentioned it to my son, he said, "Yeah, I gave that tour," which says even more about the school, that it developed a child that wouldn't raise his hand in class for four years into a confident, articulate teenager that set him up for success in the future. Terriffill does this by increasing roles and responsibilities as the years go on. By sixth grade, the students don't just raise the flag and make morning announcements. They have assignments to go into the kindergarten class at the beginning of the day and help unpack the students and put their things away, and at the end of the day, to help them pack back up and put on their snow boots. They run the field day stations. Parents don't volunteer for this. The sixth graders run the stations, and I've talked with a lot of parents, and no other schools do this. And they host the talent show as emcees. Yes, like all schools, Terriffill has book buddies, but it also does so much more to have all grade levels interact on a regular basis that has helped create the strong community, confident children, and leaders. This confidence and pride in my son's school enabled my shy boy to give a tour to an adult. If you only look at the numbers, Terriffill is an easy target, but Terriffill School is more than just a building. It is a community, and you can't put a price on that.
Thank you very much.
I have just one more thing that I haven't heard from anybody else. Terriffill is the only Title I school in our district, and we have a lot, a lot of low-income students. And a lot of the parents aren't able to be here tonight. One of my daughter's classmates' moms is one of the school lunch workers at one of the schools, and she works second shift unloading trucks at Home Depot. She can't be here tonight, but it is one of those things where Terriffill is the community where we have so much diversity in nationality. We have so many students from so many different countries that come to our school, but also we have the financial diversity that it's so nice to not feel like we're always having to beat the Joneses, that everybody is down to earth.
Thank you very much. Please, please.
Hi. My name is Matthew Dobro. I'm at 11 Westwood Drive. I'm not in Terriffill, but both my kids went to Terriffill. My son is still in there in third grade. I think it's an amazing school. Two points I wanted to make. Considering the two options that you have presented, the two current options, not the original first option, which I'd like to comment on later, is I heard from a person earlier today, said she did a whole bunch of research on the reasons why moving sixth graders into a middle school with seventh and eighth graders is not a good idea, and it's trending going back the other way. From just common sense, from my part, knowing my daughter's age and thinking of her being in sixth grade, being around eighth graders, and knowing the different mindsets, some of the things I see in chat groups and stuff like going, I don't even think are appropriate for a seventh grader, nonetheless, a sixth grader. And so I'm just, of those two options, I would really prefer the fifth and sixth being together, but beyond that, I would prefer neither of them. I would prefer to see Terriffill School stay. And this is just my, I'm a business analyst and I'm an analytical mind. One of the things I saw up there was, one of the reasons against Terriffill School was geographic location. You can't squeeze any more buildings in there. I'm not an architect or anything, but you can always go up. You can put another floor on, you can go upwards, you can increase space there, not by expanding outwards, but otherwise, you know, increasing vertically and putting another flight. I don't know how that would appear to the aesthetics of it, but I didn't see anything stated about that type of thing. It was all spread out ground-wise. So there are other options with Terriffill. Thank you for your time.
Hi. My name is Leigh Vaughn. I'm also a graduate of Terriffill and graduated from Simsbury High School in 2010. This has nothing to do with statistics, just kind of my personal experience. If I could describe the community of Terriffill in one word, it would be family. I not only grew up in the neighborhood that many refer to as the Heights in Terriffill, but chose to move back from Florida to raise my own children here. For me, my experience growing up in Terriffill and attending Terriffill School built me to be the person I am today. Not only did this community define me as a person, but I am one of my four siblings who attended Terriffill School. It is the basic and foremost foundation of Terriffill Elementary that has given us the essentials to become the successful individuals that we are today. This year, the multi-generational aspect continued for me. I was able to watch my daughter attend the same school that her mom, aunts, and uncles all attended, but the joy in her face that she gets to know and share the same experience as the same people she loves and looks up to is irreplaceable. The thought that my son, who would start kindergarten in two years, might not get that same experience is heartbreaking. Terriffill Elementary is a truly unique school in so many ways. I specifically remember my transition from elementary to middle school. The integration from an intimate school to the joining of all the elementary schools could be a difficult one for some, but that same intimate community gave me the skills to successfully integrate into that new situation. The socio-emotional aspect of schooling right now is so crucial to our young children's development. It is why I chose to bring my children up in Terriffill versus larger school districts. The sense of community, family, and small classes and emotional development is what defines Terriffill School. I'm beyond fortunate to have a daughter who received her first Climb Foot Award this year. For my five-year-old, for my five-year-old to learn right off the bat that character lives in my behavior, and not only to treat her peers and teachers with kindness and respect, but herself, is something so valuable for a five-year-old to learn. I could go on forever with why I chose to raise my children in Terriffill and attend Terriffill Elementary, but there is no better place than Terriffill. My neighbors can be friends with myself, my children, and their grandparents, and that's the sense of community and family that Terriffill brings. That is why people move to Terriffill, for the school and that sense of community. In a society where our children are constantly questioning themselves, please do not let future generations miss out on what shaped and defines many of us today.
Thank you. My name is Leonard Lanza, 2 Fire Brick Lane, Simsbury. I've been in town for 56 years. I've lived in Terriffill, Simsbury, and West Simsbury. I had no intentions of speaking tonight, but I feel compelled to say a few words. That's not uncommon, by the way. I have been the principal of Terriffill School all during the decade of the '70s. I was the vice-principal of this school from '67 to '70, when we added sixth grades to the seventh and eighth grades while we were waiting for Squadron Line School to open. It worked. It's not anything we really wanted to do. My average class size was 29 students, but it worked, and it worked well, because it had to work. I was also the principal of Latimer Lane School from 1979 to '82. I know what it's like to have to bite the bullet. I was the superintendent of schools for 13 years in three nearby small districts, and then I did nine interim superintendencies after I retired. I know, it hurts, and you have to bite the bullet, and it hurts. The inevitable consequence, unfortunately, of having a perceived credibility gap usually takes place about two years from now, the next election cycle for the Board of Ed, and that has an impact upon the administration. It happens that way, and it's unfortunate. I would encourage that you do everything you can to eliminate that perceived credibility gap, and I thank you.
My name is Josh Falco. I live at 1 Harland Road in Terriffill. I wanted to speak tonight just on some of the concerns, not just from Terriffill perspective, but for many of you in the audience who may be not from the Terriffill perspective. And the first thing I wanted to say was to the Board of Ed and to the Facilities Enrollment Task Force members, if you're here. I appreciate the Option 1, the old Option 1, being on the screen, but looking at the minutes from the 10-1 meeting you had, it was very clear that at the end of that meeting, a vote was taken on what to bring forward to this public forum, and the one keeping Terriffill was not on that. So as much as you showed that on the screen tonight, and I appreciate that, that wasn't what was voted for, so I do question that. And I question that because under the benefits of that Option 1 during that meeting, the two benefits were, community may like due to the lack of change, and it's $100 million, it would save 30 to 50 million. So those were the two benefits listed, yet at the conclusion of that meeting, you didn't vote to bring it forward. You voted for three other options. That's concerning to me.
Right.
I would also like to say that when we talk about the impacts to Simsbury, it's not just Terriffill. So I would classify it in this way, and I'll make it brief, but as a parent in Terriffill, I think that's one where you're probably closest to the flame, if you will. Your kids are there, you see the greatness in that school, you've heard how great that school was, probably part of the reason you moved there, such as we did, and obviously it would hurt. I don't think there's any doubt to that. And I am concerned, again, I will make mention, that when it was talked about turning in the minutes from one of the meetings, again, that 10-1 meeting, about giving Terriffill pre-K, you're really still shutting down the school, the note there was, it was a nod to the sensitivity of the community. And I would like to tell you, in what you see and hear here, it's not sensitivity, it's pride, and we don't want a nod, we want our school. So just keep that in mind. Beyond that, I would say that Terriffill is a great school, and we should have more kids coming in there. I saw in the study, there was trying to split squadron in Terriffill, and, you know, that wouldn't work, I understand, but you can send some more kids there. There's going to be redistricting no matter what.
30 seconds.
So it would seem like, think out of the box and think, let's send some more kids to this great school instead of just shutting down that school and sending all those kids out of there. It just doesn't make sense. I would just wrap up with, the town of Simsbury overall, it impacts all of us, not just the redistricting, not just losing the identity of Terriffill, but just think about what makes Simsbury Simsbury. Look at downtown, look at the farmlands, look at the open land. It doesn't look like everything around us. And if we start going down that slope, following trends, doing what others do, we may look up years from now and not recognize who we are, and I hope that doesn't happen. So I ask you, if you don't have to shut a school, why would you shut a school if it doesn't benefit anyone and negatively impacts everyone? There has to be a better way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tom Carroll, 37 August Road, Tooton Hills District. I've been a resident of Simsbury for three years. All of this is pretty new to me. My oldest child just started kindergarten. I have one going into kindergarten next year, and I also have a two-year-old, so anything that is decided, we're going to live through it. Where we moved from, so I'm initially from New Hampshire, small town, K through eight, so all of this is, it's kind of, the idea that we have five elementary schools blows my mind to begin with. So knowing that my mind's already blown, I kind of want to blow it again, and what happens if we actually built a sixth school, a sixth elementary school, that now you guys aren't trying to fit more people into the same spaces? I don't know if that's ever been looked at or considered. I don't know exactly where you would put it, but I'm just trying to think out of the box a little bit, right? That seems to be a trend. It seems to be that everybody in Terriffill, you know, I totally get it, because Tooton's on the line too in one of the options, wants to keep their school. I want to keep my school. I'm actually on a border road between Tooton and Latimer, and quite frankly, my wife and I've talked a lot about what happens if we do get redistricted. One school we don't want to go to is Latimer, strictly not because of it's a bad school, but strictly because it is bursting at the seams. All of the apartments that have been built up is definitely adding to that. A lot of development has happened there. So one thing that, you know, I also want to mention is, and I'm at fault here too, because I haven't done this yet, but the turnout that we've had tonight, fantastic. Imagine the turnout, if this turnout happened at the zoning and planning and zoning commissions, and then we didn't allow all of those apartments to be built, would we be in the same situation? So that's, you know, that's where my head goes, is let's think about other creative solutions. Can we think about what would happen if we did build a sixth school? I know everybody has their identity around their existing schools. That new group would build an awesome identity around the brand-new school, so thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Eric Schinaman. I live at 184 Farms Village Road in West Simsbury. From 1982 to about 2001, I lived at 53 Hayes Road in Terriffill. I came back, I chose to make my family in Simsbury because of the person that Terriffill and the community there and the school there made me. I respect and I appreciate the very hard work that is obvious, having gone into this plan. However, I felt compelled, seeing the options on the table, to share a bit of background that I didn't see reflected on the page. I come from an unusually diverse family background. Several of my younger siblings are adopted, they're Filipino. Terriffill, as many speakers have said so far this evening, is both an economically and a socially and a racially diverse community. All of my brothers and sisters were made to feel welcome and made to feel wonderful and part of the wonderful, tight, close community that Terriffill is. And Terriffill School had an integral part in that process for them. And again, having gone on to high school, to higher education, to law school, and to a career, I chose to come back to this town because I knew the character that I got in the school that I went to, and I wanted that for my family as well. I want to point out again that economic diversity is something that is a fact of life, and has always been a fact of life in Terriffill. I remember parents of friends being able to attend conferences because the school was in walking distance. We all lived in the same neighborhood. If Terriffill children are routed to a different school, if the school is closed, I heard references to Route 315. The fact is that the amount of parental involvement that I know I'm going to have with my children in my school district, and that I think any parent wants to have, is going to be difficult for parents in Terriffill. It's going to be tough on kids to be taken out of the community and taken far away to one of the most convenient other elementary schools. So I respect the hard work that has gone in, but I do want to push back hard. I don't feel that this is the equitable way for our town to proceed forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
My name is Paul Chelfy, 230 Firetown Road. And before I get into the "not in my backyard" scenario, I just wanted to give a little background. My family's been in Simsbury since 1913, including myself and my wife. 24 family members are Simsbury High School graduates, so we've been around. I am a townie, if you want to put it that way, but more importantly, I think that longevity's given a perspective to, at least with me, I look at it as Terriffill is Simsbury, so as we talk, so is West Simsbury, and we're collective, you know, Simsbury residents. That's my attitude. And more importantly, I would like you to really, really think about keeping them all and fixing them all. That's primarily what I wanted to get across. But also, more importantly, closer to home, to be very honest with you, I live a quarter of a mile down the road. I don't know how many of you have driven down West Street lately, in the last couple of years, at 7:00 AM in the morning, going to the high school. You know, Firetown Road is a strong secondary artery, and my major concern, especially when I saw, again, it was a very, very good presentation, but when I saw the statistics of going from 630 students here to 1,080, that 450 students more, you know, my simple math is that that's a 70% increase. And my question, probably for a future date, is I'm concerned about how many of those students are going to be driven here, because there's already a logjam here if you try to get, if you try to head south on Firetown Road in the morning. And again, a gentleman had mentioned backing out of driveways. Well, I'm one of them that has to back out, but even more importantly, the majority of residents in, on Firetown, the way it's structured, have to back out. And at times, you have to wait five minutes right now, because it is a business artery. So... So, again, I don't know if traffic studies have been done as far as just movement, where it's all going to flow into Firetown. Again, how many students are going to walk, which is also a safety concern, and I also believe that regardless of being driven, I'm sure that bus schedules, they have a certain protocol where there's going to be added buses going down Firetown Road if you go to a fifth and sixth grade additionally here. So, that is my major concern, but again, more importantly, I really do feel that you have to go back, revisit it, and I would just hope that there'll be an ability to fix all of the schools or expand all of them and keep them, especially Terriffill School. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jade Hoyle, I live at 48 Hayes Road in Terriffill. I was born in New Britain and raised in New Britain. I went to Loomis Chafey in Windsor, then to Wesleyan University. I went to New York City for some years, then came back, met my wife, and as we were looking for a home, I was looking around because I wanted to be in a neighborhood that had great schooling and to live near people that I live near. And so, I actually have money, and I decided to move to Terriffill. I put my business, I worked at ESPN for a number of years, but then started my own company. I put it in Bloomfield because it's diverse. It's the most important thing in the world today, and this is simply an affront to that. It's simply an affront to that, and quite frankly, I worked a lot with data, because I worked in the MBA, and sometimes data gets in the way, right? It's just smoke and mirrors, and it keeps you from using your common sense, right? So, what are those things like, I couldn't think of anything less inspiring for a preschool kid to be in the same building as administrators. That's insane to me. And that's, this is where we're at. No, no offense, but this is, I mean, come on, right? And so, like, and now, the other thing, does anybody get the BOE emails? Could the font be any smaller? You know, and so, that tells me something. Tells me that there's always something going around us, and I have examples of that. Recently, you know, I had read up on some of the stuff going on with the lockdown drills, and they're causing tremendous PTSD for kids in K through four, five, right? So, I investigated it because I wasn't notified until after it happened, you know, and to which I learned that they're telling my kids that there's a bear outside. And then later, you know, some months later, my kid's too afraid to go downstairs because he thinks there's a bear inside, and I didn't know why. And I found out, thanks to talking to the wonderful people at Terriffill School, why that was. And so, what that exemplifies is a lack of transparency and communication to the people. And we're the people, you know? They serve us, and we shouldn't put up with this nonsense. Thank you.
You're all set? You can start over here. Thank you.
Sorry. I'm Sarah Schultz, I'm at 28 Winthrop Street in Terriffill. I apologize if some of this is redundant. When my husband and I made the decision to move back to Simsbury closer to family, I knew I wanted to be in Terriffill. We didn't even have children yet, but I knew when we did, I would want them to attend Terriffill School. Terriffill is a national school of character that is ranked number one of the town's five elementary schools. Of the five schools, it is the most diverse, being the only one under the 400 mark, ranked at 392. As a member of a diverse family, this matters to me. I believe that the closing of Terriffill School would be crippling for our Terriffill community. In an area that sees more and more abandoned commercial buildings, where people start to care less about their properties, I think the closing of the school would push people past caring about our community. Why should we try or care if we just continue to lose the businesses, churches, schools that used to bring us together? My concern is that these decisions are being made based upon projections. There is no guarantee these numbers will continue to grow. Some of the recent housing developments are apartments and townhomes. Many people may buy or rent initially, but the trend I have seen within my own circle of friends is that once people have families and children, HOAs and restrictions on property maintenance has encouraged them to move quickly to single-family homes with more privacy. Which of that becomes the case spreads the projections to different areas of Simsbury, Weetog, Terriffill, or other towns altogether. Another concern I have is traffic. A lot of people use Terriffill as a cut-through to 91, Hartford and Windsor. Currently, I'm told the school provides a bus for the kids who live up in the heights of Terriffill, because they don't want the kids crossing 315 to get to school. If the student population of the school changes to a preschool-based curriculum, that would mean all the students would be picked up and dropped off by their parents rather than bused, which increases the traffic in an already congested area. This drains community resources with police already currently patrolling this area due to increased speeds during high-traffic times. My concerns are many, and I feel sad and frustrated to see Terriffill is being considered pushed to the wayside. I graduated Terriffill School, by the way. At a certain point, community, character, and quality needs to come before the bottom line. I am 37 years old, and I can remember by name all of my elementary teachers. That's not a number or a statistic, but there is something in that, though not quantitative, is impactful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Toland. I live at 11 Tannager Circle in Terriffill. I've been in the Terriffill section of Simsbury for 23 years. I grew up at 63 Hockam, and I lived there for 26 years. So, I've been a resident for 49 years. I attended school from pre-K through 12 in the Simsbury school system. I tried to select out from my notes the things that hadn't been brought up since we're running late on time.
Thank you.
Most interesting to me, at least, is that the last investment that the town of Simsbury made in any school was this Terriffill School. In 2009, they added on a great new cafeteria, and if I understand the proposed options as they're outlined here tonight, those funds will just essentially be totally wasted money, of our taxpayer money, just to put to the side. The Board of Ed obviously won't have a need for a large cafeteria, there'll be no food service provided, and so, that expenditure from less than 10 years ago is just money down the drain. The next thing is, and this was touched on lightly, but the projected growth in Simsbury, and I am a residential real estate broker here in Simsbury, the projected growth that we're seeing in Simsbury is almost 100% attributable to our past decisions. Our past decisions which allowed the development of very large rental communities, including Aspen Way on our south end, Mill Pond in the center, and then to top it off at the north end with Dorset Crossing. That's where all of the children are coming from. And so, for $2,500 a month, you can send your kid to the Simsbury school system and never pay a penny of tax here. You can leave with a high school diploma, a great education, and that diploma will leverage you and your child into the best colleges and universities in the world. So, I think that there may be time to consider a tax on people who live in town that are not paying property tax to support all of this expansion of our schools that's required in order to support the influx of renters. And our town is now paying for the planning and zoning decisions of all of the renters that are here, and that's the traffic problem. It relates to many problems, and as a residential Realtor, I could have sold those units, and many Realtors in town could have, as condos, 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 and those people would have been paying taxes for their students to go to our best schools that we've paid for over a lifetime. Thank you for your time.
Hi.
Can someone help them with the mic, please?
Thank you. Hi, I'm Abby Feeny, and I live on 4 Woodlot Road.
I'm Wendy Thompson, and I live on 24 Chestnut Hill Road.
And we both go to Tooton Hills School.
We are sixth graders in Tooton Hills Elementary School, and we are here to talk about this. So, first of all, you shouldn't close our school, because, well, we do a lot of amazing fundraisers, like Project Outreach, where we give food and things to the homeless people, and we do sandwich making, which we give to the homeless as well.
And also, the teachers are really great, and we have a great principal. We also have all-aborde families, where a few students from each grade goes to one teacher, and we get to learn about each other and interact with each other from other grades. You shouldn't close it, because lots of students go to it.
It's an amazing school, and yeah.
Thank you very much.
That was really nice, ladies, thank you. My name is Jane S. Thatcher-McAlpine, I live at 1 Tower Drive in town. Principal Alonza, if you're still here, hi. I'm a townie too, longtime family resident. My kids have had great experiences in the schools as well, they went to squadron, but I was fortunate enough to be one of those kids who got to go to school every day and read "Knowledge is Power" over the door. And, you know, being in a smaller school, you definitely gain, you gain leadership skills, you learn confidence to get along with so many different people. And if I were to run a focus group, and I work in marketing, I would go around, I would ask, you know, "What are the things you love most about your school?" And everyone who's come here tonight, they've enunciated it for us already, they've told us why Terriffill School is so great. So, like the young man from New Hampshire said, "Why would we close it? It's one of our best schools. Why not emulate it? And if there are any open, available parcels of land left," and we know a lot of the inventory has been removed with some of these large buildings, "Why don't we look at some other alternatives? Definitely think outside the box and do what's best. We don't have to follow the trends. We need to do what's best for our community, and we've already shown what is a really good model of success in looking at Terriffill School." So, that is my encouragement to this board, is to open your eyes to other alternatives. Possibly also, have you gone out for other creative bids from other architects, other solutions out there? And let's just, again, do what's best for our kids, and I think we've already shown to ourselves that we have a great school in Terriffill, and it would be a shame, and it would be totally inappropriate to close it. So, thank you.
Hi, my name is Pat Carpen, and I live at 24 Worcester Road, and believe it or not, but my senior prom was in this very room. And I graduated from this school. But, my grandparents came from Poland and decided to take residence in Terriffill, and they raised their children there, and three of them decided to also raise their children in Terriffill. My father was in the service for 20-something years, and he decided to come back to Terriffill, and I'm very happy that he did. And after I had gotten married, I also had my two children in Terriffill School. So, I am here to say one thing, please do not rip the rest of the heart out of Terriffill. It is a wonderful village and a wonderful place for people to have their children grow up and go to school. Thank you.
I'm way taller than that. Hi, my name is Melissa Osborne, thank you. I am a resident, I live at 44 Sand Hill Road in Weetog. I have been a Latimer parent, and I recently moved from Orchard Lane. I was hoping to move to Terriffill, but I had such a short closing, I couldn't find something in time, and that kind of really disappointed me. But it made me think a lot about the situation that the Terriffill parents are facing, and I really spent a lot of time reviewing the proposal and the plans that I've seen, and, you know, as an attorney, I just came up with, you know, questions that I would naturally ask that I would still like to hear answered. I don't have, you know, I'm not sitting on the Board of Education. You guys are the ones we elected to do this, and I know it's a hard job, and you volunteer thanklessly with all of your time. So, this is not at all, it's a criticism, it is simply, these are questions I'd like answered. And one of them is that, I saw the option of keeping all the schools open kind of disappears somewhere early on in this kind of nebulous administrative council thing. And I don't know who these administrative council people are, I'm sure they're good, well-meaning, hard-working people, but they're not our Board of Education, they're not the ones who we voted for, they're not the ones that we elected to make these kinds of really big, multi-gazillion-dollar decisions and decisions about our community. So, that's just my first question, which is, why didn't we get a chance to have your input and your final say on that? Because you're the ones we elected. The next is that, while there was a nice little loop that was placed around the Henry James School, I really wondered, why wasn't there a traffic impact analysis done for the Henry James residential neighborhoods? Because no matter what kind of loop you put around this school, all the traffic's still got to come in and out, and I remember dropping my kid off here for two years, and it was already a mess. So, I wouldn't really want to live in this neighborhood without a traffic impact analysis, and also what that would do to the real estate property values in this neighborhood. I wonder, you know, were there surveys sent to the parents of Tooton and Terriffill to have their input considered before these kinds of monumental decisions were made about their communities? And I'm wondering, you know, were there any studies of property values and what the impact would be to the property values in Terriffill and Tooton if that were to happen? Those are some kinds of things that I would want to see in a study that has this kind of monumental impact for our entire community for decades to come. I'm also wondering why, if we do get 10% more money from the state and the federal government to renovate to new as opposed to new construction, why wouldn't that be an option we had looked at much, much more seriously? We all know that the money we're receiving for education these days from the state government is really not reliable anymore, so I think that we really need to maximize every single cent that we have to spend here, and we need to save that value for the taxpayers of Simsbury. And I'm also wondering about the goal that was put up there of equalizing the population at every single elementary school. One thing I noticed about the pretty graph that was up there is that Terriffill is the one place where the population of the school is projected to remain constant. So, I don't know why there was a need to add on to the Terriffill School to equalize the population, when the Terriffill School already, as the footprint that it has, will sufficiently serve the projected population, which is the same. So, if you've got a great school, and it's not projected to grow, why close it down?
30 seconds.
I don't understand that. And I'm sorry, I've got a bit of a cold, so I apologize. I also wondered, I'm just curious, if we have this huge population growth occurring at the elementary school level, can our high school actually absorb that same growth? If we're going to have these 300 or 400 new kids moving in, and why are we not talking if this is a master facility plan? I'd just like to have a confirmation that the high school won't require some $50 million, $100 million renovation once those kids get to be high school age. I want to make sure that our high school is included in this master facilities plan if it is also going to need accommodations. And this is really a more emotional...
Finish up, please.
I sure will. It's more of an emotional and quality-of-life thing. We make decisions in Simsbury all the time. That costs us a lot of money because we have a quality of life, you know, we have a flower bridge, we have a rainbow, a rainbow walk, we have lots of things that cost money. But what I want to know is, why are we talking about sending the kids in the most diverse and the least socio-economically advantaged area of town? Why are we making them be the ones to cross two state roads to get to their school?
Your personal opinion.
And we value that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize, I forgot one important point, I apologize for coming back, but in terms of available land up in Terriffill, as the local real estate agent, I did do a lot of research on this, and just so you're aware, 40 Winthrop Street, which is the building and the home that sits directly to the right of the entrance to the Terriffill School, is currently for sale for $115,000. In addition to that, behind the school and to the right, there's a large parcel of land that's already owned by the town of Simsbury that's designated as open space. And the third parcel of land is referred to as Parcel 12, and if you drive into the Terriffill School to the left and to the right, there's a large tract of land there that runs behind the old Hampton House, all the way to the graveyard. And so, I don't know what that total acreage is, but what I can tell you is, the other person suggested going up, there is room to go out.
Almost last but not least, I almost didn't get up tonight, because one of my topics has come up a few times, but I did feel compelled to come up and advocate on behalf of the special-needs population. My name is Joan Robisho, I'm from 23 Michael Road, I live through the woods there. The reality of transporting a child with special needs, I'm just going to pull a little meat around what some of the moms shared with you earlier. How about saying a prayer when you put your three-year-old on the van that she'll make it to the school where the nurse is without having a seizure? Or that she won't grab at the locks or the seatbelt to try to get out on her way there so she doesn't lose this benefit of being transported by the town? That's just the reality that I faced and would like to share with you. The danger is real. The placement of the Ready, Set, Go program is critical and central. And transporting our kids across the town 20 minutes through traffic can add danger for our children. When my daughter was bused across town to Tooten Hills, I live in the Squadron Line District, I had a lot of fear. But when it was time for her to come back to her home district here, her home community, I gave serious consideration to selling my home because I had fallen in love with the Tooten Hills community. Yeah. But then I fell in love with the Squadron Line community. And then I fell in love with the Henry James community, and now I love Simsbury High. So I felt compelled to come up and say that. I feel like I really missed out not going to Terriffill. But I want to stand here for my last moment with you and give voice to the hard-working teachers in all our schools, to all of my daughter's peers who put their heart and soul into supporting her each and every day, to help her build character. And I hope that my daughter has the opportunity to grow old here in the town that she's grown up in and that you've all invested in, in her with the blessing of her education and support. So thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Anne Sato. I live at 9 White Water Turn in Terriffill. My son is in second grade. I have two questions that nobody else asked, and one is, when is this ultimate decision going to be made? And second, who makes it? Is it the Board? Do we leave this meeting tonight and you guys go back to do your thing? And then whether you agree or disagree with our position about saving our school and keeping it open, who makes the decision? You know, I realize it would be a consensus, I assume, of the Board, but is it the Board? You know, is it us?
Yes, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to understand.
Did you have another question?
No. The other question was, when? What's the timeline?
We, well, we are done here, aren't we? Let me, let me respond to a couple of things that I heard tonight. The number one thing I really want to say is, we do the best we can. We have put this information out for the last year. We talked about doing a study because we knew that we were going to get a lot of students coming into our district, and our priority is to make sure we have safe places for our students to learn and the best environment that they can learn in. And I would never say that one school's better than the other because every school is terribly special in this town. That said, we, we are doing this, it's a process. And the biggest part of the process today is to get your feedback and hear what you say and answer the questions that you brought up. So the, the next piece of the process is to take the information that we got tonight, potentially reach out for more information from the community, and to accept any community information that you bring or send to us after tonight. But our goal has been transparency for many, many years. We started a communications committee for that purpose alone. We did a communication study with all of you, every parent in the district, and we have been told that we are, we do a good job and we get to people the way, the way they're hearing us. Everyone in this room who voted on the budget referendum saw this as a line item on the budget referendum that we were going to do a study because our schools need help and we needed to do a long-range plan to be the most responsible thing we could do for our town and the most efficient and hopefully the most economical. So those are pieces that are really important to us, and we, I heard that a lot tonight. And I'm sad that you think that we're trying to do something other than be transparent and to be clear that we want to hear what you have to say. So I just wanted to make sure you knew that that has never been our intention, and we work really hard to not make that a thing. And we wanted you here tonight. We want to know what you're thinking, and we want to hear what you're saying. So all of this information will come back to us, and we will absolutely welcome any more information anyone wants to give. And so the timeline, we're still, the next step is, we don't have a timeline yet. So thank you very much. There's a lot of information for us to go over. Mr. Superintendent, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, I would just like to absolutely say thank you. You know, long evening, great feedback, wonderful passion in the room. Everybody here cares about the same outcome. And to reiterate what Tara's saying, we will step back, we'll process the information. It's clear there's a desire to see other options. We will think through that. And as a school district with so much to communicate on, it's something we continuously strive to be better at. So we'll take that feedback to heart too, but clearly not our intention. Again, appreciate the teachers coming out. I had an opportunity to go to Terriffill School and talk to them the other day. And we're proud of our schools. Our goal here is to make a continuous improvement plan that will serve the needs of children way beyond those that are currently in the school system now. And we'll continue to try to do that. So thank you very much. You will be hearing from us, and we really appreciate you coming out tonight. Thank you.
Funding for Simsbury Community Television is provided in part by contributions from viewers like you. Thank you.